...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Item two are Commissioner's comments, so we'll start. Linda, did you have anything?
I want to make just one comment, just so everybody's aware. The Chamber is going to do their leaders retreat again on January seventeenth to eighteenth, and the cost for any, you know, staff member or elected official, you know, local government to attend this thing, which is in Olathe, is, you know, about $465 a head. And I've seen as many as 27 staff and local officials between the school board and whatever go there. And I won't be attending again this year for that reason, simply because I think it's too costly. And we have conference centers here in Junction City and in the Flint Hills region. And if it's a Flint Hills Regional Council, why doesn't the Chamber simply hold it in our local area? Because we give economic development money to attract conferences. We take our own conference to Olathe, and that just seems to be totally out of sync. I think they do good things there, and I don't have a problem with private business going there. I understand. It's a worthwhile event. But to me, it just sends the wrong message, especially when we're pinching pennies on every little project that we're doing at the city.
Well, this is our last meeting for the year, and I just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays. Enjoy Christmas, family time, friends' time. And if you're traveling, safe journeys back, and Happy New Year, as we move into the new year after this meeting. But we don't know what the weather's going to be like, but we won't be here. But our staff is always very accessible. They do a wonderful job keeping our streets safe and our community safe. So if you have any questions, or if you need anything, please feel free to contact us, or contact one of the staff members.
Yeah, I guess my comments are very similar. You know, we've had a great kickoff to the holiday season. We had an auction for Christmas trees that was sponsored by RSVP that did very well. That group helps a lot of people around our community. Then we had the tree lighting down on Blue Earth Plaza. We had some activities in between, and then we had the parade and the tree lighting up at Triangle Park. We had two Saturdays with breakfast with Santa Claus and a lot of other activities. So the spirit of the season is truly here. Again, I'd just like to thank all the volunteers and kind of echo what Commissioner Reddy said about family and time together and being safe. Our next meeting will be on the seventh of January, so this will be our last time to be with you till next year, at which time we'll seat two new commissioners. So I'm glad everybody's here. It's always good to have everybody in attendance and kind of do the process that our towns and villages are supposed to be doing with the city governments. Item three is consent agenda. These are items that have been considered previously by the Commission, or those that are housekeeping in nature. And one of the processes we use, if any commissioner has a question about items on the consent agenda, they have the opportunity to move that to the end. We'll also have an opportunity for the public to comment. And just to reiterate the rules, we'd ask for folks to come forward, state their names, sign in, and then we have a five-minute limit just in order to, for everybody who wants an opportunity to speak to do so. So those will follow throughout the entire process tonight. So any comments on the consent agenda?
I just want to highlight item E, which is improving operations down at the animal shelter, one of my favorite topics. And if you look at Facebook, you'll see they posted on there, "We've got a great adoption event for the holidays." So if you're interested in having some new pets for Christmas, they're available at the animal shelter, everything from rabbits to cats to dogs. It's all there. Go down there and take a look. Some great animals down there.
At this point, I'd ask for any public comment on any item that's on the consent agenda. Anyone wishing to comment on any one of those items can come forward at this time. All right. Yes, please.
This is where we...
Sure.
Good evening. My name is James Donegan, and I'm here on behalf of the Douglas Center Project.
If we're going to comment on Douglas Center, we need to wait to the general agenda when that item comes up. These are just consent agenda items.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. No, you're good. Thanks. All right, seeing no further public comment, we'll come back to the Commission and entertain a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll make the motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Call the rule, please.
Mayor Doxson.
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
And now move to item four, general agenda. And the first item up is item A, to consider awarding a Douglas Recreation Center construction contract. And we'll have Eddie Estes, Director of Parks and Recreation, and then Jason, will you be coming up later? Yeah, okay. And Bruce, is Bruce here?
Yes, he is.
Okay, good. All right, Eddie.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Appreciate the time tonight. Yes, Bruce is here, and he certainly can answer some technical questions you might have in regards to design. Tonight's topic, yes, is the Douglas Recreation Center. It's been a long trip to get here, but here we are tonight. If you recall, the Douglas Center Advisory Board, they prefer a recreation center as similar as it can be to other centers that we're currently designing at the middle schools that has one primary 84-foot basketball court, the two smaller cross courts, auditorium space that is multipurpose, that can accommodate pickleball, volleyball, and we talked a lot about an elevated walking track. Douglas Center Advisory Board preference is a three-lane elevated walking track above the court. They also prefer additional multipurpose community space. If you recall, May of this year, the Commission approved a conceptual design of the Douglas Recreation Center, as well as approved a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to finance the Douglas Recreation Center. The current project, we'll show you a little bit of it, as designed by Bruce McMillan and his team, includes the preferences of the Douglas Advisory Board. It also includes four alternates. Each one of those alternates has an estimated price. You can see Bruce's base bid estimate of $4.5 million. Alternate one, first floor, multipurpose. Alternate two, second floor, multipurpose. Alternate three, sports flooring upgrade. Alternate four, exterior lighting. And I just want to point out that total base bid and alternate estimate of $4,593,222. This is a visual of the facility as it's designed. This is from the east. This is a little small, but I wanted to be able to point out to you. This is the first-floor site plan, north being up, west and Tenth Street on the left, of course, Ninth Street over here, Fort Riley Boulevard down below. This space is that alternate number one, community space, alternate number one. And just also pointing out the reception area, office, lobby, restrooms. And then you could also see the one primary court. And if I don't confuse too many lines, two cross courts that are running north and south, where also pickleball can be accommodated, volleyball can be accommodated. You see bleacher spaces on the sides as well. On the right is the second-floor site plan. This space is alternate number two, classroom on the second floor. And if you look close, you can see the three-lane elevated walking track that is above the courts. Again, we talked quite a bit about the number of lanes, the walking track being elevated as opposed to ground level. This design, this project includes three-lane elevated walking track. November nineteenth, we received five bids for the project. Cheney Construction was the lowest bid, but we determined Cheney Construction was not the best responsible bidder that was the most suitable to the city. We provided information, your packet, supportive of this. Trinium was the next low bid, and we determined Trinium as the lowest and best responsible bidder, most suitable to the city. There's about $73,000 difference between the two bids. You can see Trinium's base bid there, plus alternates, $3.8 million, which is made up of a $3.7 base bid, first floor, alternate one, $40,000. Second floor, alternate two, $45,000. Sport flooring upgrade, bit higher, $38,000, but we feel we can work with Trinium to reduce the cost of that sports flooring upgrade. And then the exterior lighting, alternate number four, $15,000. Again, I'm just calling note, these bids substantially lower than our estimate. I think that's important to note. Financing aspects of the project, if this project is not completed, and you'll see in a timely fashion, HUD's determination, a timely fashion is three to four years, HUD will require that all expended community development block grant funds be repaid. To date, we've used $348,677 in community development block grant funds. If we don't build this project in a timely fashion, we're going to have to repay that amount of money.
When you say repay, can we use, is it replenishing our own CDBG funds to use elsewhere? Are we just writing a check to the federal government?
That's our understanding. It would be repaid to HUD, and it could come back to us in the later allocation.
It could. So there's no guarantee that that $350,000 we couldn't use elsewhere for CDBG projects?
Further financing, typically the bond and interest fund, you're all familiar with it, mill levy is about four to five mills annually. Over the next four years, and this information was in your packet, the bond and interest fund is going to retire a substantial amount of money annually in project expenses, in the area of $900,000. In the graph there, you can see debt service for a $4.3 million project. That top 10 years, average payment, $615,000, mill levy impact of about .88. You follow that down to a 20-year note, $367,000 annual payment, about a .45 mill levy impact. Looking at that and understanding debt retirement over the next several years in bond and interest, it appears there'll be capacity in the bond and interest fund to finance the annual debt service for the construction of the Douglas Center. I just wanted to show you, there's more items for us to be able to, for us to pay for than just the construction of the project. I indicated that in your packet as well. We have design fees above community development block grant fund fees. We have the utility relocation fees, which we talked about back previously, to put utilities underground, bidding services, and then construction administration with Bruce McMillan. There also is a 10% contingency, whether we would need that or not. We put that in there just so that you're aware. That goes up to about 4.6, whether we would use that 10% contingency and hold it down in the 4.2 area or not. But again, just a detailing of all the items that will need to be wrapped into bonding. So tonight's recommendation, city administration recommends the city commission accept the architect's opinion of probable cost, and award a construction contract with Trinium. I'm not reading the entire recommendation. It's pretty lengthy. But again, award a construction contract with Trinium for the base bid and alternates one, two, three, and four, and execute a contract amendment with Bruce McMillan for construction administration services. That's my presentation. I'm happy to stand for questions. Yes, Bruce McMillan is here and can answer questions, if you have those as well. Any others that you might have?
This might be a wrong question, but on your financing slide, the projects that are supposed to fall off the bond and interest fund that represent that $900,000, so obviously that's capacity for the Douglas Center. But do, like, do we know how we're going to pay for the levy that protects this part of town? So I would assume that that would be the same money that we would tap into for projects like that. Is that a wrong assumption?
Not necessarily, but obviously, the, one of the things that we'll have going forward is to, a future commission, we'll do traditional, commission's already approved temporary notes for this project to finance the design back in May. And so ultimately, once we'll do construction financing, that'll last a three- to four-year period. That's, over that time period is when that, those debt service payments will fall off. And so it'll really be a different commission that'll ultimately decide how they want to, how many bonds they want to issue and other aspects to the financing. So how those other projects that, whether they would be supported by bond and interest is certainly yet to be determined. The levy has other options, and that's something that we can discuss, the future commission will discuss, as to whether or not it'll be levy-supported or not, bond, mill levy-supported.
But it is eligible.
It is eligible, absolutely. Whether it's some of that, or whether it's new, new impact. We think there are several alternatives for our portion of the levy, and certainly those can be discussed in the future as well.
And the levy's been delayed.
Yes, and just last week, we received information from the Corps of Engineers that they're likely not to proceed with bidding in that until 2021 now.
They have projects downstream that are severe.
Yeah, I, yeah, which I understand that. I guess this just goes back to the original point that I made a while back, and I think Commissioner Reddy said something similar as well, is with sales tax not passing, I can see absolutely how this one project fits in to how we would pay and not have to raise the mill. But I want to do this project, and I love this project, but levy's still number one, has to be number one in my mind. And I haven't seen anything about how we pay for all of those projects. And I, again, my general complaint is I always feel like I'm being led along, and I don't want to vote on something tonight that's going to hamstring a future commission, because going into budget next year, I think we're already going to start out with a raising of the mill, no matter what. And so I feel like I'm compounding that problem by not having a full vision. And what you're explaining to me is that I'm not compounding that problem, but that's not something that anybody on staff has illustrated to me effectively over the last, since the election, essentially. And so that's the thing that I'm struggling with tonight, is not having a full view. If this was the only project that we had to do, absolutely no-brainer. We're moving forward with it, but it's not. And the levy to protect this part of town is incredibly important as well. And I'm just not sure I'm getting that information, so.
Yeah, I wanted to see if my analysis of this is correct. Okay, now, based on the bonds that are coming off of the bond and interest fund over the next four years, it's $936,000 is what the amount is. And if we were to dedicate that to the Douglas Center on a 20-year thing, that would take about a third of that, $367,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. You know, there's, traditionally, our mill value has escalated. So it'd be, but in the ballpark, that's correct.
So we would still have, you know, $500,000 of bonds coming off that could contribute to the other projects that we're trying to fund?
It's also true that additional bonding will come off
Right.
in 20 years. I think you're talking essentially about a shorter term, aren't you, Bernie?
Yeah.
Yeah. And of course, I'm with Commissioner McKee. I'd like to, you know, have a macro view, big view of, you know, how we're going to handle all of this, because if you put the money on there. And then the other, only other source of revenue, there is still money in the Economic Development Fund. And there's $6 million there, and of course, some of that can go to these other projects also. Could go to this one if we wanted to do that. But I think that's the only flexibility we have, and I'm a little bit troubled, you know, with the vote. The vote was no. You know, to fund it through sales tax, does that mean it was a vote yes to fund it through property tax? I don't know the answer to that. So, but I'd like to see a solution to all of them that makes sense, but I'm not for raising property tax. And if we were not to have any bonds coming off the books, this would essentially be a, you know, .45 mill levy increase for 20 years, .45 a year for 20 years, based on the data. And of course, if you remember last year, when we passed the budget for 2020, the mill levy increase was .45. So the Douglas Center project, if you look at it from that standpoint, it's the same as the entire increase was, you know, for last year.
Yeah, you know, we're talking about financing for this, and they've, the Douglas Center has come to us several times, and I think it's time that we did do something for that neighborhood and the community. But when we talk about the sales tax, the way I read the failing of it or not passing it was the permanency of it. I don't think they were saying no to all projects, we don't want them. I think there was a fear about a permanent sales tax and where that's all it going to go. Because when I talked to community members, they were very interested in the projects that we were discussing, and some of them were more interested in one project or another that they knew a little bit about. I think having it permanently was the, was what I was hearing. They didn't care for that so much. I think we're going to see future sales tax ballot initiatives for a variety of reasons, including the EcoDivo funds. But there are options on how to fund this, so I'm not going to rule that out, simply based on the sales tax that didn't pass. Because that's, those things happen, and it's continuous sales tax in the past haven't passed, well, that doesn't make sense, before, before this commission was here, hadn't passed. But we also need to move forward with some of these initiatives. So I'd like to hear more from the community members on this as well, as well as Bruce, once we're done.
I have a question. You, in your materials, Eddie, you have mentioned that it is the preference of the Douglas Center Advisory Board. In the past, we have had a firm recommendation from the Douglas Center Advisory Board. And so I'm asking about the shift in language.
We have several advisory board members here. David Baker is here. I think I could easily change the wording on preference. This design went to that advisory board. They were very insistent on a three-lane, upper walking track. That's reflected in this design. So my intent was to make sure that you did understand that the design does represent their input, and certainly welcome, I believe Deb's here?
Yeah.
Advisory Board Chair, she certainly could comment on that as well, because we did take the design. Bruce McMillan worked with the advisory board. That was some of the direction from the Commission to make sure that we worked with them.
I'm just asking about the shift in language, because a recommendation is much stronger than a preference.
Sure.
Thank you, appreciate
My mistake with that one.
your comment that we shouldn't assume that. I would, I'm curious, when did the CDBG clock start? So we have a sense of when this three-to-four-year period, or when they might, it might expire.
We've been utilizing, Eric and Chris could share a way in on this as well. The project initiated, Jason will have to weigh in a little bit, too.
If you're asking about when does the clock start for payback, it starts when the design was completed.
So it hasn't, so has that passed, or is it yet to come?
It's imminent if it hasn't already passed.
Okay.
I mean, they're about to bid, so, or they did bid, so the design is complete.
On the design part?
Yeah.
So that's now, that's not a year and a half ago, or a year ago? Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Thanks, Erin.
Well, those were my couple of questions, anyway. And I understand your discussion about the finance, so probably need to hear from the public.
I just have one more question. What is, when was the last time we invested any sort of substantial money or into the Douglas Center?
We've had several projects down there to improve the exterior of the Douglas Center, as well as interior, and we use community development block grant funds with those. We rebuilt the restrooms at the center, some roofing aspects on the center, and exterior improvements on the center. So that's all occurred within the last three years.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's take some public comment here. I know there'll be some. We have, the first person that signed up is Mr. Isles. I think you've, didn't he already sign in? Yeah, you've already signed in.
Mayor, city commissioners, my name is Terry Isles. I'm an attorney that represents Cheney Construction. This does involve the Douglas Recreation Center, and the primary reason I'm here is because of the comments that were made by the Recreation Director and also Mr. McMillan, in a memo that was, I believe, provided to you about whether they recommend Cheney Construction for this project or not. Cheney Construction is the lowest responsible bidder on this project right now. Cheney Construction has previously done projects for the city with respect to the Douglas Recreation Center. What I'd like to visit with you about, though, is the comments made with respect to the expansion center and whether Cheney is responsible for that or not. I think it's important for you, if you're going to look at that memo and make your determination whether Cheney Construction is responsible or not, is to ask yourselves, has there been a forensic determination on what's wrong with that roof and who's responsible? And none of that issues are addressed in that memo. My client constructed that project in accordance with the plans, specifications, and contract documents, period. That's what was asked of him, that's what they did. There is a leak, we admit that. There's been numerous people up there trying to figure out where that leak is, and they couldn't figure it out. It's not the roof, we can tell you that now. It has to do with two different things. It has to do with the expansion joint between the, where they merged from the old building to the new building, and it also has to do with the brick and mortar. Those are the two areas where the water is infiltrating. This is not addressed, if you would, in the contract documents at which my client was to construct this. My client constructed this project in accordance with the plans and specs. It's a design issue. I'm not here to pass on Mr. McMillan whether he did it right or not, because at the time, it appeared that it was going to be fine. Nobody knew that it might later leak. But it does leak. And I think we all know what's transpired now. I previously provided correspondence to you all. I've also provided these pictures. And what I'd like to do is walk with you through these pictures so you can get an understanding of where I'm visiting about. This is the actual roof that Cheney Construction was responsible for building. And there's a joint right down here where it merged or met up with the previous building. This new wall that's been construction is the fix, and that's what Cheney Construction has done here. This is a part of it as well. This is matching up the ten on the roof, so forth. I'm going to go on down. This, this trans, it goes all the way down the entire roof line, the way they did this. But if you see that, that blue chalk line, my client was only responsible to that point where it met up. This is all new. This is all new. Let me go on down. This is how they're redoing it to merge up correctly. Let me go on and show you the next pictures. This is actually the finished product, where this ridge cap now goes up under the previous ridge cap and overhangs that lip. You can see through the very end pictures how it's all now completed. And this is the other side of it. With respect to the responsible bidder, I think it's important that Chaney Construction has done a lot of projects for the city. It's a very responsible bidding contractor. It has gone up there and fixed this problem that it was not responsible for, nor was it responsible to incur the financial burden, which it did. It paid for this out of its own pocket. With that, we would respectfully request that you not take into consideration the comments in that memo that my client is not a responsible bidder. And we would respectfully request that you award my client the project on this. I'm open to comments, to questions. Any questions? Thank you.
My name is Stan Herman. I'm a lifetime resident of Manhattan here. And I've been in the construction business all my life. I am also on the advisory board for the Douglas Center. So Chaney Construction built the law enforcement center out there. And me being in the construction industry, we heard a lot of comments about the problems they had with the law enforcement center out there after Chaney built it. So there are different opinions on the credibility of Chaney. And I was one of them that voted against Chaney taking on this project right here. I grew up four blocks away from Douglas Center down there, in that neighborhood. I have three sisters that live within three blocks of the new proposed recreational center down there. And so I would like to see this. And the history of Douglas Center, it was built in 1941 as a USO for the black soldiers at Fort Riley. And I was born a year later. Anyhow, I went down there, and me and my two brothers swam in the Douglas swimming pool down there, in this very location where this recreational center is proposed. So I have a lot of history in that part of town. I have eight brothers and sisters. And so we grew up down there in that area, and we really had a great time living down there. And I just want to just say, this is truly a citywide recreational center. If it's attached to a school, you're under the schedule of schools. This is not going to be tied to the school schedule. It can be used year-round, and not particularly, oh, school's out, so I don't know if we'll be able to use it or not. So there has not been a new building built down there in 78 years. So it's time for this to be voted on and put into usage. I just think it's a wonderful part. I grew up in that part of town and spent a lot of time in the Douglas Center playing basketball and whatever. And so it's a recreational facility for the whole city. And I just thank you for the opportunity to be able to talk about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Good evening. Again, excuse me for my lack of due process before. I'm not always up here doing this. But my name is James Donegan. I'm a former athlete for Kansas State University in 2002. I'm a father of four. I live in this community. The Douglas Center is a place my kids go to every day, as much as they can. They use that gym. The guy, Mr. Baker, the other representatives that work there, they help those kids on a daily basis. Being from Washington DC, a center like this afforded me a scholarship to Kansas State University, because I was developed in a place like that. All the budget stuff I'm hearing about, I'm not vast on that. But what I am vast on is building the moral fiber of your community. So it is our responsibility to help young kids of all backgrounds and cultures to develop. A place like the Douglas Center could do that. Sometimes you might have to pay some taxes towards that, to develop people's futures. Not everybody can afford to go to K-State and use their recreational facility, including myself. And I went to school there. I go up to the Douglas Center as well, as an adult, and try to help those young kids develop as well. So I just wanted to come here and say I'm in full support of the construction of the Douglas Center. And you have to think about the youth. I haven't heard one thing said about kids in this area, all right? So it does have a vast history that I'm learning more and more about as I go up there, because I'm not from the area. I've been here for about 12 years, and I still don't know everything. But I'm getting immersed in it. I'm starting to love my community. It was hard to separate from the community that I grew up in. But now that I'm here, I'm deciding to love the community. So that's why I'm here today. I think all of us should start thinking, more importantly, of growing Manhattan. Because being from DC, we are behind. We are not where we should be athletically to help the kids develop in that respect. We have to get future forward on that and move in that direction. Towns like Lawrence, moving closer to Kansas City, they have these facilities, and their kids are moving on, and they're going further than ours. And it's time for us to take a look at it. I hope my words have helped you make a better decision on this project moving forward. If it can't be this project, maybe down the road, we can find another project to make that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you'd please make sure you sign in there, so we've got you covered. Anyone else, please? Come on up while he's signing, if you wish.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, my name is Greg Ferris. I'm a representative of Kansas Health and Fitness Association. Kansas Health and Fitness Association is an association of for-profit, tax-paying clubs throughout the state of Kansas. I passed around a sheet, and you'll see that there are numerous clubs in the city of Manhattan that are tax-paying clubs. They pay property taxes, they collect sales tax on their membership dues, et cetera. We don't have a problem with a rec center. We think rec centers are what cities should do. A rec center should be basketball, I don't have a problem with walking trails, those kind of things. But when you start talking about including fitness, that's where we have a problem. There are fitness centers that provide fitness from all levels of costs. So you don't need to go to the expense of providing fitness. I noticed in the presentation, there was no mention of fitness. But if you read the agenda report and you look at the line items, there are dollars associated with quote-unquote "fitness." We think those should be eliminated. We think community rooms. We think that basketball courts are things that the private sector will not provide. But the private sector does provide fitness centers, where there is equipment, where you go and you can work out. Genesis, for example, has a program where if you can't afford it, you can apply for scholarships through their foundation. So there are lots of different ways and structures of costs that can be attributed to different parts of the community. And there's, fitness centers are very close to this. So we would encourage you to, if you think your community needs this, that you go forward with those things. But did you eliminate any kind of fitness? Fitness has several other issues. There are ongoing costs associated with fitness. If you put equipment in there, that equipment doesn't last forever. So you then have to replace it in the future. And here's where our rub is. We're going to pay, as the local clubs, they're going to pay about $400,000 a year in property tax. I'm not 100% sure what percentage of that the city gets. Probably a third, that's what most cities. So that's what we're paying for you to build our competition. There's no competition if you want to build a basketball court, if you want to build community rooms, so that kids can go and play and enjoy. That's what it's for. That's what a city needs to provide. Does not need to spend money today and on an ongoing basis for fitness. And we ask you to, if you approve this today, to approve it without spending any additional funds today or in the future for fitness at this facility. Just to give you some numbers, I said there's $400,000 that we're going to be paying over the next year, in a rough number. Some of that is attributed to the new Genesis, which will be spending about $285,000 a year in property tax. Genesis is very much opposed to you taking part of that money and building competition for it. We also collect sales tax. The local sales tax numbers are going to be in the neighborhood of $100,000. I'm sorry, that's the annual sales tax, and whatever percentage of that you get. So the state gets some, you guys get some of that. Some of it goes to some of your other programs. Again, we're collecting those from our members that join and pay. If you have fitness and you charge memberships, you don't pay that sales tax, which doesn't go back to the community. So as you steal members from these clubs for your facilities, because you have to, and you're going to spend money, so you have to steal from somewhere. So we ask you not to do that. We ask you, if you want to move forward, great, but eliminate any fitness. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else, please?
Good evening. My name is Carl Taylor. I serve as a pastor of Mount Zion, located at 916 Umu Street. I just want to speak on behalf of the children as I get a chance to sit in my office, look outside, walk around the building, see the children in the community. There needs to be some type of facility that allows them to have access to play basketball, sports. And I understand what the gentleman in front of me was saying about the, as far as the fitness of it. But our young men and young women who don't make the teams at Manhattan High School, where do they go? They're still teenagers, they're still young people who need a place to go. This addresses all of Manhattan, not just one area. All of Manhattan, every child that is here has an opportunity to go there and to address their fitness issues. Just because you don't play football at Manhattan High does not mean you don't want to lift weights. Just because you don't want to run track does not mean you don't want to run. So it is important to have the facility and also address the needs of those who cannot pay to go to join Genesis, or K-State, or any other health club here in our community. As a body, we have to address the needs of all the people, everyone. Not just those that can't afford to pay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor.
My name is Joyce Storans. And I've been in this community since 1962. That's the year that the school at the Douglas area closed. I know some of you know Marjorie Johnson. She was one of the teachers that I met that taught school over there. But anyway, I'm here to support this project, okay? I'll just tell you right now. Because number one, I could not go to some of these places that was named, like Genesis and whatever else it is, without paying some money. Because what they look at is your income. And then they go according to that. I've tried to get different things done at my home that's free. They go according to income. The other thing is that I want to say, I go to Puritan Baptist Church also. And I'm close to where this facility is going to be. In fact, I could walk over there in the summertime. That would be nice. And I want everything, whatever that project called for, I want it all. Because upstairs, walking, I can't play basketball. And I don't know nothing about money, because I don't have a lot of money. I retired from SRS a few years back. I know some of you that's on the commission, and I appreciate what you're doing. But I wish you would take a serious look at this project. Because when they took the swimming pool, I didn't know nothing about they were having meetings down, about that. You know, I thought the money they put out there in wherever they put it should have been put down there to fix that place. Because it was really integrated down there, the swimming pool. I'd go over there and look at it, because my grandkids came here for the summer. In fact, if you look back at one of the pictures, he's in there. They took a picture of him down there at that swimming pool. So you know, that brings me some history to me. And other things that has been moved from down there, and I have to say, and I'm going to say it. The June 10th, I heard all kinds of things about that, okay? And it's in a good place now, it is, it's in a good place. But you don't see as many black folks there as you used to see. I know some of them have died out, because we're all going to die one day. But that was close, that those people could walk. You have to, and I know Manhattan has the buses now, but I don't even know when the buses come around. I just see them picking up people. I'm serious about this, y'all. So I really would love to see that center, rec center, built down there. I really would. I'm getting older, and you see my hat on my head? That's to keep me from getting the earache. So you all laughing, but it's not funny to get, it's good to get old, I'm going to tell you. That's better than whatever else. But anyway, I just want to say, thank you for letting me talk a little bit. Because I'm a big talker, they say. But I'm going to cut this off. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else, please? Come on, while she's signing, come forward.
Commissioners, my name is Debbie Ness. I reside at 2404 Sumac Drive. Thank you. I am the current chair of the Douglas Center Advisory Board. To Commissioner Morris's question, when we thought this was on your agenda for the December 3rd meeting, the Douglas Center Advisory Board did meet prior to that meeting. And our vote was that we would, that we supported the base bid plus all four alternates. So it wasn't a preference, it is an unequivocal support of the base bid and all four alternates. I just want to remind the commission that the Douglas Center Advisory Board has been unwavering in its support of this facility, even to the point that when we thought it was going to be financed through the HUD loan, and we weren't getting all the amenities that we thought should be in the facility, we were still supportive. And then when the HUD loan wasn't available, we saw it as an opportunity then to advocate for those things that we thought needed to be in the facility. So the things like the elevated track, the meeting space, and the fitness room, so that it truly is a community recreation center. We were pleased then, when the bids did come in so competitively. We were quite relieved, actually, to see that. Because we were afraid that your decision would be harder than it is already tonight. And we do recognize that it is a hard decision. But it's also good to know now that we can build a facility to a budget that is just really not that much more than what the HUD loan would have been. But we are getting all the amenities that the community says that it wants and needs. In terms of the use of the facility, I did check with the In terms of the use of the facility, I did check with the school district to ask how many students K through 12 live in the geographic area, and I just arbitrarily picked 17th Street to 3rd Street, and then south of Anderson, Blument Avenue, kind of that geographic area. Because as I think about the community, if you think of the northwest section and the northeast section getting the gyms associated with the middle schools, then the other third of the community is that section. There are anywhere from 550 to 600 students that live in that area that you could argue would be served by this facility. This community also has a history of making sure that we treat all areas of the community equitably. I think about the time when the quality of life bond issue passed, and we made the improvements to City Park Pool. We also made sure that we made improvements to Seco Pool and Northview Pool, so that all three of those pools had special things about them, so that one pool wasn't better than another, or that there weren't fewer amenities at one than there were another. So while there have been investments made in the Douglas Recreation, or the Douglas Community Center area, we haven't made substantive investments. And how I would define that is in terms of, this recreation center would be a substantive investment that would serve a significant population in the community, and I think that it's time that we make that kind of investment in this area and our community. So, thank you.
You can go ahead and start if you like, just to give us your name, and then you can sign in.
Okay. My name is Cheryl Allen, Cheryl J. Allen, for the record. And I am not from Manhattan, but I've been living here for the past six years. And I've seen the development throughout the city. And for the city commission to continue to develop other areas and neglect, obviously neglect, the area of Yuma Street, which is a historical area of this city. It shows that there's still a lack of commitment to grow the area culturally and to invest in it equally. And so, we're talking about the youth that don't stay young, and if you want them to keep their families here as they grow and develop and come back, you want them to have something to come back to. And everyone isn't going to have access, nor want to isolate themselves from the Yuma Street area. People love it. There is a warmth about being there. There is a need to grow it. So for a person like me, who has come from the outside and has seen the obvious neglect in the area, it's a poor reflection of the true unspoken, or what I should say, it contradicts what the city commission is saying about developing the area, all of the area. So you can go down just over on points, and it's beautiful, and the historical sites have been preserved, and other areas have been enhanced, but once you cross on the other side, there isn't anything there. And so, those of us that support the black churches that are there, the Douglas Center, those are the heart, together, they comprise the heart of this area. And for it to be continued to be neglected when athletes and scientists and doctors and all that have lived there, have been, had to live there because they could not stay at K-State, once upon a time, okay? So this is not something that is just a new thing to not fund it. I understand historically, this has come up in the 70s and over and over again. When is it going to be the right time? When is it gonna be enough money? When is it gonna be the right source? At some point, you just have to say, now we're gonna do it and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rex Fowles. I live at 2048 Hunting Avenue. Me and my wife moved here five years ago. I just want to follow up what she was speaking about, talk about the future a little bit. First area we looked at was that area of town. My wife, neither one of us liked to drive, we can walk, we prefer to do that. You got downtown, you got Aggieville, you got the campus, and you got that beautiful park right there. It's a prime location. If this center would have been built at that time, we probably would have tried even harder to find a place in that area. I really think that is the future of Manhattan. So I'm just encouraging in that way. And as full disclosure, I am one of the pickleball players.
Did you, did you sign in?
Yes.
My name's Joe Knop, and if I'm gonna ask you to make a tough decision tonight, I'm gonna stand up here in front of everyone and explain why. I lived 23 years across the street in the South Side. For a good portion of that time, our backyard was the basketball court for the neighborhood. I enjoy this neighborhood, I want it to succeed and prosper. None of us are saying close down the Douglas Center. What we are saying is today we face a different reality than we did five years ago, when the initial program was to build a new Douglas Center with free federal money. Some of us came to you and said, that doesn't make sense, but we were told, no, you don't even know the difference between a U-Day grant and a community development grant, so you must not know anything. So it went on. But then we found that that wasn't gonna happen, and the fieldhouse group came and said, let's build a big giant fieldhouse. And couldn't raise any money, so they came to you for funding. You looked at it and you said, no, let's build neighborhood centers. And so we started out with neighborhood centers, and that became unreasonable, we started to figure out how we had to demolish a block here and there to make it work. So we moved from the concept, well, and the truth is, we really aren't committed to neighborhood centers, because we're closing, we gave away the community house, which is a downtown recreation center. And so we then said, no, we're going to build community centers. And we built, passed the bond issue to build two community centers, $20 million of community centers. A community center, we built them next to the junior highs. Why? Because that was where the cheapest and free land was. We couldn't build them in neighborhoods, we built community centers. And we called them community centers, and we called them, they were built by junior highs, not by grade schools, but by junior highs. Just as a community cannot afford a neighborhood junior high or a neighborhood high school, we can't afford a community center, a $5 million, $10 million community center in every neighborhood. I would share with you that those who live in University Heights are as far away from these new community centers as those in the downtown. Those community centers are built for, in that area, the people around them in a walking distance is a very small number. Everybody's gonna drive to that, everybody. So then we came up, that didn't work, now there's new developments. So the Manhattan School District decides it needs $125 million. It abandons the ninth grade center, the community votes for it, the city proposes a quality of bond issue without the Douglas Center. You made that policy decision, you thought about it, and you said, no, we don't want to include that. Now then, the parks and trails issue passes without the Douglas Center, you propose to raise the sales tax with the Douglas Center, the community says no to that, and now we're where we are today. Where are we today? Today, we are projecting that we're gonna be building these community centers, and under your staff report, under your feasibility report, you're gonna cost $800,000 a year to operate them. You're gonna have $500,000 of income if everything works right, and that leaves a projected deficit of $300,000. Now, in your projections, there's $55,000 of fitness center money, that you're expecting to make that $500,000 of income. The good news for me was, when I saw that you had $600,000 of property tax revenue coming, I thought, great, that'll fund this without raising property taxes to operate the community centers. So what are the options? I think there's a couple options. Certainly, you can commit to a new building, but then you've got to go to, spend all your money on your credit card, the bond issue. The second option is to delay construction and put money into the ninth grade center that's abandoned. Asphalt the parking lot, or asphalt the tennis courts, put astroturf on the green area. And you've got a basketball court, you've got locker rooms, you've got everything, for much less than $5 million. Finally, who should make this decision? You're trying to make this decision as a lame duck commission. You have lost a vote of confidence with the public. In Great Benton, the Prime Minister retired, resigns, and we have a new election. You're taking a grenade, pulling the pin and throwing it, and making the next commission figure out how they're gonna resolve it. Let the new commissioners decide that. They campaigned on it, they know what's going on, they're gonna have to deal with it. Or better yet, let the public do it. Every amenity in this community that's not a need, has either raised significant private funds-
Mr. Knop, that was the five seconds.
Five seconds.
That's the five minutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience and your courtesy.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Commissioner Dave Baker, Director of Douglas Center. We've been working on this project for three years. We started in 2016, and now we have an opportunity to make it a reality. Last week, I watched the construction company work with the underground utilities. Somewhere between 2004, 2005, we did take out the swimming pool, but nothing was ever put back there. In 1979, and I think you've got a copy of it, there was an article in the Kansas State Collegiate, and at that time, they were thinking about replacing the Douglas Center, and they were thinking about replacing it with the HUD money. I wasn't here at that time, but I don't know what happened, but it did not happen. That was, from the time the building was built till 1979, that was 40 years. In 2016, we tried again to use the HUD money, which we had some complications, and that's why we are here today. The HUD money did not work then. Here it is, almost 2020, 40 years later. So now we're talking 80 years since anything has really been done down in that area. I know the commission understands the need of this facility, and all those people that patronize it. I would just hope that you would really give us some serious, some very serious consideration, because it is something that this community really needs. We do not have a full-fledged community center. The Douglas Center is meeting that need, but it is inadequate. If we get this new facility, we're gonna have what we call a recreation complex. We will keep the existing Douglas Center, we will keep the Douglas School, the annex, and adding the new facility that we're talking to will make this a recreation complex. Most communities have a recreation center that houses all these different things. We won't have one building, but we'll have three buildings that will meet all the needs that we would have in a recreation facility. A recreation facility is so imperative for a community. Manhattan does not have one. Douglas Center is all we have. After 80 years, I think it's time that we should really consider trying some kind of way to build this facility. It's imperative for this community. Recreation is something for everyone. Everyone can afford to go to the fitness places that we have here in town, but recreation is affordable for those who can't. And so I would encourage you to really give this some serious, serious consideration, and hope that you do tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, John Ball, 3107 here at Hay Ridge. I'm a citizen of Manhattan, and I try to be involved and try to pay attention to what's going on in the city, and I just have a little different perspective for you on this particular issue. Of course, I've been on Social Service Advisory Board until the mayor threw me off. That's a joke, that's a joke. I reached my term limit, I wasn't allowed to serve any longer, and I'm also on the Manhattan Area Planning Board. So I've been watching things, and reading, try to pay attention, always try to keep an open mind on things. But I did want to talk to you, the commissioners, which I all actually know pretty well, about city financial management and funds prioritization. Because I think that's really the question that you have before you on this particular project. You are the right ones to make the decision on that prioritization. So I can't tell you, I clearly see the need on the Douglas Center. I'm a little confused why we don't already have money for the Douglas Center, because a city has to put money away for capital reinvestment into projects that they know at some point will lifecycle out and they will have to be replaced. We don't seem to be doing real well at doing that. And this is not this commission's issue, this is a longstanding, you inherit stuff from the commission before, and then before that, and then before that. But we seem to be looking at all the projects in isolation and doing management by emergency. I heard the levy was mentioned, how much money in the last 30 years have we put away on the levy to help fund that? Runway, how much money have we put away to redo the runway? I can guarantee you that that is resurfacing runways, airport runways, is a known requirement you need to put money away. We haven't particularly done that. Even the Douglas Center operating costs, pretty much every projection I know the city has done as far as income on anything they build has been way off. Discovery Center, just pick one, and you'll find that a lot of tax money is now going to support those. We all have our particular projects. I'm a big Sunset Zoo supporter, so I appreciate the city's support to that. But the third sales tax increase in a row, I could share, there was a reason that that wasn't approved, because it was the third sales tax increase in a row. Just some data for you, between 2010, 2017, seven years, city spending almost doubled, okay? City spending almost doubled. We could not, we didn't have enough money to maintain the roads, so we had to have a sales tax and reuse, maintain roads. All right. We couldn't do all the park and rec stuff, so we had to have a sales tax increase, even though we doubled spending over that period of time. The population generously, over those seven years, went up 20%. Our spending rate for the city went up five times faster than the population. Now, how did we do that? Raised taxes, okay? And we borrowed for the city. Now, that was, okay, that's all prioritization and spending, but we've gotta be able to pay that money back. But spending has second, third order effects, okay? Right now, city population is flat, if not declining. Tax revenues, even though we've been raising taxes, they haven't been keeping with projections. So spending has consequences, and I'm talking to the city commission with the property tax, sales tax increases that we've seen here. But we also have the school board that's gonna significantly have to raise property tax to fund its bond issue. So just be aware, there's second and third order effects to spending money and then raising taxes, okay? And so where this project fits in that priority, it's, you know, it's not gonna bankrupt the city, but we do have to look at the long-term effects. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Jessica Elmore, and my address, I live actually down the street from the Douglas Center, so off of Pierre Street. I'm gonna speak from, I work at the K-State Alumni Association, and I do a lot of things on campus, and when the questions that I'm getting about the city is, how do we get more diverse people to come to the Manhattan area? We had the region reimagined, all- We had the reimagined, reimagined, all those different things. And what I'm finding is the barrier of entry into our city is challenging, because we're a very close-knit family space. And in order to get involved within the community, you kind of have to know someone. And as a person of color, or people come from places that have more different backgrounds, you're able to plug into different things a lot faster, but it takes a very long time to do that in the city of Manhattan. And the Douglas Center has been a very good space just to get plugged into. I've probably gone through about eight sets of friends who have come to the area and now have left, and everyone has either served on the Juneteenth or have been to the Douglas Center because they're trying to figure out how to get plugged in. And that's not saying that Manhattan's not a friendly place, but that's a place that you just naturally want to go to and say, can you help me understand how the lay of the land works? It's not based off of a socioeconomic status or an education status, and which is really intimidating when you're trying to figure out what your space is. So when we're thinking about the Douglas Center, and of course, we love our youth, we also have to think about the people we want to attract here, and how are they going to get plugged into this space? This is an entry point, this is a very low barrier of entry, and it's hard. I'm not going to go to a gym and ask somebody next to the treadmill, can we be friends? But I will do that when I go to the Douglas Center, or if we're trying to have a black faculty and staff welcome. We have a ton of spaces on Kansas State University's campus, but we go off-campus to help our new faculty and our staff to get to understand what's happening in this city. It's a shame that we have such rich history, and you live here for five years and you don't even know who touched the lands of Manhattan, Kansas. I mean, I'm from California, and I think to myself, what were some of these people doing here in Manhattan, Kansas? When I think about our first black graduate from 1899, or our international students from the early 1800s, we have people from all over the world who have touched this space, and they lived on Yuma, they're in this area, and no matter what our history is, we were doing this in the middle of Kansas. So I just want you to look at that. It's not just about can we afford it, but how are we helping people get plugged into the community so that they want to stay, and that they want to pay the taxes so we can continue to do the things we need to do? Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
Good evening, my name's Jonathan Rivers, I'm at 2113 Prairie Field. Recently moved back to Manhattan, I grew up here, born and raised, 618 Blument. My grandmother was really the chair of the Juneteenth Board, so I spent a lot of time at the Douglas Center growing up. It was a place of fond memories, a place of community, and really that central location for individuals to connect, to learn about their neighbors, to learn about their history. And that was something that stuck with me after I graduated. And I went away, went to school, and worked, but we came back to Manhattan after twelve years, because this is the place where I wanted to raise my family. This is the place where I wanted my daughters to be able to know their neighbors and have these kinds of opportunities that I had. And so what the Douglas Center means to me, and what I think it means to the broader community, is really that epicenter for the kinds of great conversations that need to take place, the kinds of opportunities for health to be promoted, the kinds of opportunities for leadership to be developed. That's what a community center, what a recreation center means to me, that's what I really want to instill in my family. That's why we moved back, because we know Manhattan to be that kind of place. The ground is fertile, but only if we kind of take those opportunities. And I understand this is a very, very difficult decision, and that costs are always top of mind, but I'd also just say and echo a lot of the words that have been said. If not now, when? How much longer would we like to push this down the road? And I liken it to rowing upstream, almost. Not to advance is to fall back. So just something to keep in mind, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Maureen Shaheen, I live at 1000 Pierre. I'm very recently been added to the Board of the Douglas Advisory Board. So I was not much involved with the early planning stage, but I'm very much in favor of the plans that we have now. The current plan is more expansive than the original plan was, but it includes amenities that are very much needed in the area. The elevated walking track will be a huge bonus. One of the major reasons that we need the Douglas Center expansion is because currently Mr. Baker has programs that are going that essentially have all of the facilities used to the maximum. Right now, there's just the one gymnasium, so you can have dance or basketball, you can have pickleball or basketball, you can have badminton or basketball, but you can't do that at the same time, you can't do both. So all the kids that come to shoot baskets after school, as soon as something else comes up, they have to all clear the area and go home, go hit the streets, you know? What are the kids supposed to do when there's something else going on in the only gymnasium that's free and open for them to use in the neighborhood? So having the separate gymnasium will be a huge benefit to the area and to the kids to be able to have a safe place to go, a safe place to hang out. Mr. Baker does a great job of keeping the kids, you know, in control, they know how to behave, they know what they're supposed to be doing. In addition, adding the, when you enter Manhattan on the south side, it's a little rundown-looking. So adding a nice building there will really enhance the image. When people come into Manhattan, instead of seeing, you know, a fence and a field, there'll be a nice building there, and it'll be something that the whole community can say, yeah, this is our Douglas Center, this is our historic center, this is a place that we value, and we appreciate, and we agree to support. Because it's important to the neighborhood, it's going to be available for anybody to use, not just the people in our area. So the south part of Manhattan is a vibrant neighborhood, and we've done a lot down there with very little really support from the city. The pool was taken out nearly twenty years ago, and nothing has been put in to replace it. So I think this is an ideal time, this is the time, to do something different, to add to it, and to move forward with this project. If we put it off, it'll only get more expensive. I mean, that's just the facts of the matter. There's no way that prices on anything are ever going down. So to put it, to bounce the ball down the road is just going to increase the price. So if we're looking at it as a financial issue, it won't be less expensive in the future, but it will still be needed. So I encourage you to vote yes, and to go ahead and do this, do this now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Stuart Stanton. I'm a retired professor with about seventeen years at the university. I'm an electrical engineer, a long-term system planner, which should interest you a little bit, an engineering economist, which is the kind of economist that after you build it, they come and ask you why it didn't work, and you have to explain it and work it all out as to why it didn't work. It's a little bit different than a theoretical economist. And I had no intention of coming up here this evening. I support the Douglas Center, yes, but to stand up here, no. But as I was listening to this, I wrote things on my hand, which is what a good engineer I heard people suggest that this is a difficult decision to make. As an economist, as an engineer, no, this isn't one of the difficult ones. When the economy's down, you're having troubles keeping people employed on the staff, the community's having troubles keeping people employed, that's when decisions get hard. This is at the top of things. This is not a hard decision. The budget's rolling over well, it's well timed, well planned, it is your territory, this is the group that should be making this decision. You don't pass it off to somebody else. Been working on this for three or four years now. Three runs at the wall on this, and this one looks like it could be successful. All the pieces are falling into place on this one. You have a treasure of a director, Mr. Baker. The history of this man, the leadership of this man, don't let him get away. You've got what it takes to make this work. Part of what you're trying to do, I think, is massage the various parts of the community over the years to make sure you don't have a low-rent district and a high-rent district, keep everything working well, well-oiled and well-functioning, and it's this part of the city's turn. You can't keep putting this one off. You've got to face up to it, this is a good time, it rolls in nicely. I heard somebody, the reason I got up here, I heard somebody come up here and argue against fitness. I'm seventy-two years old. Fitness isn't fun things for me, it's life-saving. Not everybody goes to a commercial center. Those who go to a commercial center, that business model, if they put money into it every month, they feel obligated to go, they go and it works. Those aren't the ones that are going to come to the Douglas Center. People like me that doesn't get motivated by that, I go to those kind of places. We need all the fitness we can get from every resource. Yeah, I understand the special concern, we always do that, we worry about the business side of things, but this is the community side, and I think that part comes first, the time's right is that. We're trying to figure out who we are, and this is a decision you guys get to make, what we're going to look like in the next twenty years, the next ten years, the next forty years, the long-term system planning, that's what this is about. And you really do have a treasure in Mr. Baker. I would grab it, run with it hard, that's the best I can suggest. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? All right, we'll end the public comment period and come back to the commission then for comments or questions.
I'll start. Okay, so first, thank you all for being here and commenting. I know, we knew tonight was going to be a busy night, and it really helps to hear what everybody has to say. It does, I think, affect, at least it affects my decisions up here. One thing that I just want to note before I get into my comments, just in case anybody decides to try to bring it up again, that's the second time today I've heard a comment being made about being a lame duck. And I got lucky enough that a few thousand people marked my name on a ballot, and I got a two-year term, and I'm not going to abdicate my authority and my responsibility to make decisions, because you don't like how I vote sometimes. So if that was going to be a comment anybody else made tonight, don't waste your time, because it's not going to move me on the issue. This has been something that we have talked about in length, that I know just as much about as any city commission candidate I campaigned on. So I feel a responsibility to be able to help make a decision on this. Moving on, I will say that not including the Douglas Center and the initial recreation sales tax, I think, was a really big miss. I wasn't on the commission when that decision was made, I'm sure at that time that seemed like the responsible and right thing to do, but it was a miss. We should have put that on a part of that sales tax question, because to me, this is an equity issue, right? There are kind of three to four really distinct parts of town. We put recreation centers in two of them and have neglected the third one. And we made a commitment when we pulled it out of that sales tax, that we were going to fund it a different way, and that funding fell through from the federal government, so it's our responsibility to find another way to fund it. With that being said, to some of the comments that were made tonight, that doesn't change the fact that the budget is extraordinarily tight, tight to the point that going into next year, just like this year, we can't even afford to do step increases and cost of living increases to our employees without raising the mill. That's how tight the budget is. And that's the reality that local governments, or at least in Kansas, local governments only make money one of two ways, property tax and sales tax. Property tax does not pay for the infrastructure in the community all by itself, doesn't even come close to it. We rely on sales tax, and because of the dip in sales tax, we have had a really, really tight budget. There have been some things on the state level that come through in terms of internet sales tax that I think will give us a little relief, but we need to push on the state level to make sure that we can continue to fund projects like this and the state's doing appropriate revenue sharing. That being said, even though the budget's tight, I still think that this is a really important issue. I was asking questions about the levy earlier, because we probably have more, at least six projects, if not more, like a dozen projects, that the commission needs to think about. And the top two priorities for me have been number one, the levy, and number two, the Douglas Center. Number one, the levy, because it doesn't make much sense for us to build a really nice building down there if we can't make sure that we can protect it from flooding and all of the community members that live down there. We have to be, protect you from flooding, that has to be the number one priority. From the comments that the city manager made, I'm going to trust that there is a plan to do that in the future, and so I'm moving on to my number two priority, which was the Douglas Center, because I think that we made a promise that we have to keep. I work at a company, and I work on a product every day where I get to talks to Parks and Recreation people. I sell software to Parks and Rec departments all over the country, I'm a product manager on a recreation platform. And one of the things that I heard from one of my staff, not one of my staff, one of my clients, was Parks and Rec is the gateway for the community to local government, and a woman was saying this earlier. It's really one of the only experiences that most people have with their local government, and if it's not their only experience, it's probably their only positive experience, because otherwise you've got a code violation and you're paying your water bill, right? So it's important for us to invest in spaces like this, because what it does is it increases the amount that people are involved in what we do here every day. I've been on this commission for two years, and we maybe had two or three other meetings where this many people were showing up. When we did budget, there was maybe five people in the audience. That's a shame, that's a shame, right? But we have to engage people and meet them where they're at, and we do that in things like the Douglas Center and community buildings and Parks and Rec centers. It truly is the gateway. Onto the fitness comments. I appreciate those comments, but I've been quite blessed in my life, and quite lucky, I tripped and fell into a good job, and I pay for, to go to one of these gyms, and just yesterday, a hundred and twenty dollars was taken on my account for the privilege to go to one of those places. And it would be a real shame for us to say that the only people who should be involved in fitness are either, A, people who are willing to pay and go to facilities like this, and two, people who have the ability to pay and go to facilities like this. When we do Parks and Rec programming, we do charge a fee most of the time, but that fee is to break even, right? To cover our costs or get as close to it as possible. And so it just provides an additional layer of benefits that we're offering to the community. So I think fitness is a key component in the Douglas Center, and we should keep it. And I'll just finish my comments to say, I think this is an equity issue, we have clearly not invested in that neighborhood to the level that we should have, it's a historical neighborhood that we need to show more love. And what would be the biggest shame to me is the city has a history of not investing in facilities like this, and then those facilities get to a point where it's dangerous for you to even walk in them. The jailhouse is a really great example, right? We have no idea what to do with that building, because we neglected it for so long that we can't even walk inside the front door without it being a liability for everybody else. And so what's going to happen is that building's probably going to come down, which is a historical loss for our community, and that same thing has been replicated at various other facilities, and if we don't make this investment now, same thing will happen to the Douglas Center, and that will be a massive, massive loss for our community. We, through the bonds retiring, we have the funds available to pay for this, that doesn't negate that the budget's still tight, but there's a way that we can do this. And like I said, the levy and the Douglas Center were my two priorities, and it sounds like we can both of them done, so I'm a yes vote on this tonight.
Yeah, so I've been here for a few years, I think this is my sixth year, and the Douglas Community Center does need some renovation, and it does need what we're talking about right now. When I was raising my three children, excuse me, we spent a lot of time at the Douglas Center at City Park. When you have three children, even if you have a lot of resources, you have three children- When you have three children, even if you have a lot of resources, you have three children, and it gets expensive wherever you go, just to feed them is expensive. So taking them to these facilities was very crucial, not just because of the expense, but because of the community. You know, the children played, there was, Don Slater at that time had homework sessions, a lot of festivals and all kinds of good things happening there. So I think this is key, that we upgrade it and bring it to where it needs to be. Yeah, the lame duck issue was brought up. There's still going to be three commissioners that are going to be coming back, and the other two commissioners that are here are very vested in our community right now. And when we talk about this kind of a price tag, it's very critical that we have a thorough discussion. If we have, when we have our new commissioners coming on, they're going to have to be up to date on that background. So I think this is a decision we do need to make this evening. There are some private entities here, you know, the chamber is here, we have lots of businesses. We should look at some of those public-private partnerships with the Douglas Center. There's a lot of investment that can be made, it doesn't have to be just all public funding. We do that for a lot of our other facilities, so this is something that we can take under our wing, either for a region we imagine, Kansas State University, whatever it might be. And I completely understand the barrier of entry that Jessica was talking about. Manhattan is such a small community, everybody has their little cliques. It's very hard to fit in. They're all friendly, they're all very nice, very accepting, generous, hospitable, but to fit in is a little bit harder, beyond the acquaintances. And that barrier of entry is not there at the Douglas Center in that community, for a variety of reasons. Just the life experiences alone are very different than other groups of community members in the city of Manhattan. So I think that is critical to have something like that there. Physical, mental, and emotional well-being is what fitness is about. It's not just about your heart rate, cardiovascular systems, or whatever it might be, or body fat. It's about that mental fitness that we have. Suicide is on the rise. Just in the past week, three of my friends have had somebody they know that has committed suicide, and these are young men that shouldn't even be doing that. So we have an issue where mental health is not being addressed the way it needs to be. But this is one of those places, building relationships and having communication and the environment of friendliness and something that's there, just because it's there. Kind of go in and walk around till you can at least de-escalate, breathe a little bit, and get back into your community, and you don't have to worry about paying something. This already has an operational budget, we already have wonderful management at the Douglas Center, we don't have to think about those operational costs like we would have to do at the other two facilities, at the two middle schools. There's already an established place there. I am all for this project, I have been for a while, and it is time that we did this, not only because for that area of Manhattan, but for the greater Manhattan at large. This is an investment in our community, and I would love to see that area also have a historical perspective or a narrative to it, kind of like we do at the Peace Memorial Auditorium, where we do it for veterans. There needs to be some history there. If we ourselves don't know it, the people that come after us definitely won't know it, especially since everything's on our phones now, there's no way to document history like we used to have it documented. So it's critical to have those pieces there as we look at renovating this piece. So I am in support of this. I do think we have funding, and we have other options for other types of funding to come in the future. But this should not go on the back burner. It has been on the back burner for a while, and it's time we move forward with it.
Anything further, Linda?
For those of you who might not know or recall, a couple of years ago, we wanted to build three gyms, that was our goal. One on the northeast side, one on the northwest side, and the south side, what would be the Douglas Center Indoor Activity Center. We thought we had a funding source with Community Development Block grants, and so we sidetracked the Douglas Center project and moved forward with a sales tax to fund the two north side activity centers. The funding for the Douglas Center fell through HUD, and for whatever all of the rules are or aren't, we were not able to follow through on that. And so the two northern gyms are full-scale, full-force ahead. And so we feel like we're catching up, need to catch up, so that we are able to balance out the needs of our community for indoor activity space. I feel that. I made a commitment in the beginning to support the Douglas Center once that funding fell through. We did say in the beginning too, that as long as we were using that money, we were going to kind of keep that, keep the Douglas Center limited to the funding available through Community Development Block grants. And so we downsized some things. When that fell through, it seems to me that in fairness and equity, we need to make the Douglas Center Activity Center as comparable as we can to the north facilities. That said, we do have another gym in the city hall here, and so we don't think that the Douglas Center gym needs to be as big as the others. So it is somewhat reduced, but still a vibrant location. And I want, I expect, I appreciate the research that the city administration has done with regard to funding, and I would be counting on that availability of funding, because we aren't setting a parameter with regard to the length of time before these bonds need to be set up and retired. But there's a plan, and I think it's well documented in our packet of materials, and I think it is a worthy project, and I plan to support it.
You want to add anything, Ma?
Yeah, my take on this will be different. My wife uses that center about four times a week, plays pickleball with the crowd down there, and it's a great social event, and nobody needs to sell me on the reason for having it. But my focus has always been how to fund it. There's a lot of things I like to buy for my house I can't buy because I don't have the funding. And that's what troubles me. And I said before, you know, we got $6 million in the EcoDevo fund, everybody's been talking about how this is so important for development, but no one will consider using any of that money for the Douglas Center, and that's always troubled me. Because the other thing that bothers me, and Commissioner McKee said that, you know, originally, we got all these projects, we asked the voters to fund it for sales tax, they resoundly said no. You know, over 60% said no. And so, and then the feedback I get is, we'll figure out how to do it with existing funds without raising the property tax. Mission impossible. Can't do it. But I'm still committed to not raising the property tax. And I like what the city put down here, you know, basically if we've got $936,000 worth of bonds coming off, and we only need 367 to fund the Douglas Center, then that's fine, but that's a budget commitment we put on the next commission. So I sort of agree with the lame duck comments here, because the next commission's got to balance all this. They can't look at it one item at a time. And I wanted us to sit down as a group and say, okay, here's how we're going to handle this after the sales tax failed, but we were unable to do that. And I wanted a, you know, a plan. How are you going to handle North Campus Corridor? How are you going to handle X, Y, Z? And I think maybe this would work with a combination of the bonds coming off and maybe using some of the economic development funds to make it payable. But I don't see that. So I'm for the proposal, but not the financing, because it's not nailed down. And it's got to be holistic, so I'll probably vote no for that reason. Not because I don't agree with the center, but you've got to have a financial plan, and we don't have one. I mean, Commissioner Morris says we do, no, we don't. We don't have a financial plan. Because you've got a new commission that's going to be seated in January, and they're going to come up with the next budget, and they're stuck with all this. And we've got to sit down, that commission as a group needs to do it. So I'd be inclined to, you know, table this thing till those guys sit there and say, okay, here's the comprehensive plan for the future. We don't have a comprehensive plan. And we can't nickel and dime it and say, okay, we're going to take these bonds off and that'll pay for the Douglas Center. And the next thing I'll hear is, oh, the same bonds will pay for the airport, the same bonds will pay for the levy. No, you can only spend the money once. And I still see, you know, $6 million in economic development, and I heard a lot of people tonight say that was economic development. So why can't we use part of that money? And I think I suggested that a couple of years ago, and was told, no, that was not a viable option. So that's my issue. It's basically the funding, not the concept.
Just a couple of things. You know, the sales tax issue, in looking in the rearview mirror, when you looked in your ballot, it was very unclear what you were getting. So in hindsight, what we probably should have done is ask for a 10-year, so everybody knew exactly what's in there. If you have a 10-year sales tax, you can specify what you're going to spend it on. So in hindsight, that was a mistake. On the state of the economy, I've said this many, many times, the city of Manhattan ought to feel very positive about our economy. Doesn't mean you don't have flat spots, but we've got things that are potentials that no one else has in the whole state of Kansas. So while things are tight right now, things have been tight in the past. The city goes through cycles, and I have every confidence that we'll be just fine. I do have some maybe corrections to the record that I'd like to submit. On the community center, we didn't just give that up because we couldn't figure it out, we gave that thing up for a higher purpose. The city could not afford to fix that up under the conditions that it was. Doesn't mean we didn't stumble years ago by not keeping it up, but at the place we were at the time, it was more economically feasible to go to a commercial enterprise to fix it, because we couldn't afford it. Now, when we look at the history, number one was the Fieldhouse Project. That was the big one. And then, as Commissioner Morris said, we thought we were going to get a HUD approval, and we could get a HUD approval for the Douglas Center. Unfortunately, the state of Kansas requires a cash reserve to do that kind of business. That meant we would have had to set aside about $5.5 million that we don't have. So unfortunately, we've moved ahead with that tax issue, and then the Douglas Center, under the original concept, failed. So, does that mean it is any less important? No, it's absolutely important. And then, as to the fitness thing, when Mr. Stevens came before the commission to build Genesis with his attorney, one of the things that was discussed, both with the staff and here in front of the commission, was that what the city was going to do and what other entities inside the city were going to do in the way of competition, otherwise he wouldn't have, I think, entertained to build that Genesis Center. So all this is kind of old business. I mean, these were the conditions that were known to Mr. Stevens, at least. Now, in the Douglas Center itself, we have arguably the most walkable center that is in the city. In other words, if you looked at what people are doing in this area of town, they're walking or they're biking. So it's more important to have something that is closer to their needs. And I think some of these things have been talked about before, but I look at opportunity, I look at community, and then maybe most of all, for our young people, we look at mentoring. So when we have people like Dave and others that are down around that community center to give some guidance to our young people, I think this is a great thing for the city. Sometimes you have to look forward, sometimes you have to make investments, sometimes you have to take a little risk. You do this in business every day. So I'm very supportive of the Douglas Center, and so if there are no further comments, we can call for a motion.
Does anybody have any desires to use any of the economic development fund for that? I'll bring it up one more time.
That's for a future commission to decide. You've just been, I mean, you have been railing about how we're lame ducks and the future commission decide, they can decide how to pay for it. We make decisions all the time that have implications that will last decades. We do it every single night, and so I don't know why this is such a new concept that's come up. But yes, you can have that argument with them at the appropriate time when you're doing budget.
All right.
Okay. Mayor, I accept the, I move that we accept the architect's opinion, a probable cost in the total amount of $4,593,222. Award and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a construction contract with Trinium Incorporated of Manhattan, Kansas, in the total amount of $3,833,142. And authorize city administration to finalize, and the mayor and city clerk to execute Contract Amendment Number One, in an amount not to exceed $93,300 for construction administration services with Bruce McMillan Architects of Manhattan, Kansas, for the Douglas Recreation Center.
Second.
Okay, call roll, please.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
No.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay. Well, thanks, everybody. We appreciate everybody taking time to come down and give us your opinions. It's very valuable to the way we're trying to do business here in the city. We'll take just a minute, if you will, and let the folks, we've got some going out and some coming in, so. Okay, if we could have everybody who's kind of here for the Douglas Center and no other items, if you can just move out to the hallway and then have folks move in, so we can talk about the Kimball and College intersection. Dennis, you may want to, you guys may want to get the doors back there just so we can hear, once we get everybody in.
718.
Are you sure you want that?
and approve Contract Amendment Number Five with BG Consultants for Kimball Avenue and College Avenue Intersection Improvements, North Campus Corridor, Phase Six.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Brian Johnson, City Engineer. Tonight's item is to award a construction contract for the Kimball College Intersection, which is Phase Six of the North Campus Corridor. I'm going to start the discussion tonight and talk about some geometrics, safety, signalization, multi-use paths, and multimodal transportation. After me, Jason Hilgers, Deputy City Manager, will follow and discuss the financing. Then, K-State Administration will share their vision for this critical corridor of transportation, and how this will be the north entrance to signal that you have arrived at Kansas State So project overview. This is Kimball College Intersection. This project extends north and south of the intersection. We extended it in order to develop longer turn lanes for north and south traffic, improve our level of service. In addition, east and west, the project goes from about Gate Five over to just west of the entrance to Via Christi. Again, we extended the project that far in order to develop the dual left turn lanes. Level of service at this intersection is C and D. We projected through the transportation demand model to go down to an F. So what is this project? North Campus Corridor is multi-phase transportation, stormwater. North Campus Corridor is a multi-phase transportation, stormwater, signalization, geometric, multi-use and streetscaping project. Five of the 13 phases have already been completed. This would be Phase Six. The North Campus Corridor was originally created in 2013 to parallel the Kansas State University 2025 Master Plan and we'll talk some more about that again tonight. So this is our sequencing phasing plan. Again, one, two, three, and four have been completed. Those are partnerships with Riley County. We split a 60/40 cost on those. Again, talking about regionalization, Riley County helped participate in that. We are nearly complete with Phase Five, which is that second phase of North Manhattan from Research Park down to Baker's Way. Phase Seven is under design and we're talking tonight about Phase Six. This is a pretty colorful graphic and there's a lot going on, but if you really look at it, we're phasing from the outside in. The reason for that is so that when we have lane closures and we have traffic closures, people can still get around the corridor if they don't need to go through the corridor. That's why the phasing plan is set up the way it is. If we start juggling that phasing, we start moving things around, we're going to have some serious, pretty significant traffic impacts. So again, 2013 was the creation of North Campus Corridor. Since that 2013 vision plan that K-State shared with us, there's been nearly $36 million of new buildings in that corridor. Thirty-six million. Phases one through four have already been completed with Riley County. They included widening, geometrics, a multi-use path, and lighting along Denison and Marla. Phase Five is nearing completion along North Manhattan and again, it includes widening, horizontal alignment, and lighting. So the traffic impact study that was created for the 2013 project, that traffic plan indicated a five-lane section with a median. Median is for safety. It's to keep people from turning left as you come out of those driveways. The cross-section, which I'll show in just a moment, reduces access points. That's a critical goal in safety. Anytime you can reduce access points, you're going to drive accidents down. So this is what that cross-section would look like. This is eastbound, you're looking eastbound. Westbound is coming at you or coming out of the page. North is to the left, so we're proposing an eight-foot sidewalk on the north side. Currently, there's no sidewalk on the north side of Kimball between College and Denison. With the Riley County projects that were just completed, a multi-use path came all the way from Marla and TCB all the way to Kimball and Denison. We now nearly have a complete loop from linear trail around the city. This is that next piece of that loop. Again, we show the raised median. The goal of the raised median is to keep folks from turning left out of here, especially at peak times when there's not adequate gaps to get across the roadway. And we're going to show a traffic or an accident pattern here in just a minute. You're going to see these driveway issues. So the entire corridor had 214 crashes between 2012 and 2017. That's 30 crashes a year. It's about three a month. Included in that were three fatalities and 65 injuries. Those are injuries that are going to the hospital, so those are expensive, life-changing injuries for people. Forty-eight crashes occurred just in this phase of the project. Just that phase that I showed, there's 48 accidents in that phase. One fatality also. Installation of the median would reduce crashes by an estimated 40% or 12 accidents per year. That's one less accident a month. So here's our crash history, our crash diagram. Again, 30 total crashes in the history, nine injuries, one fatality. When we plot our crashes where they happened in this corridor, there's actually so many near the intersection that actually overlap. If you actually counted these, you wouldn't count as many as there were because they overlap. But again, you can see crashes at driveways, crashes at driveways, driveways, and driveways. Lots of crashes in here because of that dual left. We have a single left now. That single left backs up into the through movement. Anytime a left turn backs up into through movement, extremely dangerous. Think Fort Riley Boulevard in Palisco. Think Anderson and Seth Child. When you're coming down that roadway and somebody turning left is into that through movement, you're going to have accidents. So PCI rating, the other issue we need to address quickly. This intersection and this street is in pretty horrible condition. It's in bad shape. We were going to mill and overlay it two years ago. This project came along, we waited, didn't do it last year. Now has come the time that we need to make decisions on this. If we decide not to award this project tonight, we're going to go out and we're going to mill and overlay this next year. That mill and overlay and that street pavement is going to cost about $1 million. That $1 million is not going to buy you geometrics or left turn lanes or signalization or multi-use paths or multimodal transportation.
You might just explain what PCI is, Brian.
Sure, that's a pavement condition index. Rob's been talking about it for the better part of a decade. This PCI is in poor condition. If you noticed, we've been working west of this area. We've been working between Browning and here. We've worked from Browning to Seth Child. Next year, we're going to work from Seth Child up to Avery. Because Kimball, which was a county roadway at one time, we got this roadway from the county, had a lot of years of service since the late 80s. We haven't put a lot of money into it. Now is the time. We need to do something with this corridor. So with that, I'll stand for questions or I'll turn it over to Jason.
You might just maybe go back a little bit here and explain what we found when we're down west of Browning and what we found with the condition underneath the roadway being a county road.
Yeah, and we've actually cored this roadway, Mayor. The inside two lanes are about five inches of concrete. The outside two lanes are about five inches of asphalt. No base, no material underneath it. It's in extremely poor condition. This 1980s county roadway, it's been there for 40 years. When the county paved this, probably 2,000 carts a day. Today, it's over 20. By 2030, it's going to be over 30. This is the next Anderson Avenue. This is going to be Anderson Avenue in the next five years. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
I'd like to ask you about north of the intersection.
Yes.
North of the intersection. And is it a three-lane there with a turn lane in the middle?
Currently, it's four-lane.
Four-lane?
Yes.
Why does it go so far north or what is the purpose of it being so long?
Sure, so the reason why we're extending it this long is because the transportation demand model is showing we need a long left turn bay to get people out of the through lane. Marla's getting busier and busier. The county, as part of that Phase One and Phase Two, has four-laned it. A lot of folks are now coming down Marla instead of going to Kimball because Kimball has backup issues. The transportation demand model is showing that that left turn bay needs to be extended.
Were you going to show any of the packet slides that have the funding in there?
That's Mr. Hilgers.
Pull up a couple of documents here for you. We got the item and we can run through those slides. Quick here, you get to the images that were developed by Confluence. It's our landscape architect design firm involved with the project with BG. We have eight slides here. This starts basically on the south end of College near Dickens Avenue. So this new entry feature is adjacent to the new soccer complex. A lot of the fencing that you see in this image is being built or has been built by K-State. We'll be doing the plantings, the new signage entry feature, along with the lighting, banners, and the actual grass landscaping. The next slide, sorry, the next slide is adjacent to the baseball stadium. And again, a lot of the construction that'll take place on the right-hand side of the screen is by Athletics for Baseball. We'll pick up things again near the sidewalk with lighting, banners, and some trees. It's not until we get to the bus drop zone where we start to pick up a low knee wall, additional trees and landscaping, lighting, a pedestrian area, and obviously accommodating bus drop zones next to baseball, soccer, and football. Cat Town is almost directly adjacent to the bus drop zone. A lot of activity there on game days, but also would be able to facilitate an ATA bus stop zone as well. Now we get to just past or right at Jack Hartman Drive. You can see the landscaping and the knee wall start to change adjacent to the parking for the football. We get into these entry monuments and a knee wall with plantings behind, trees on both sides, and another sidewalk adjacent to those improvements. This is an aerial view of the intersection, so you'll, more of a bird's eye. Most folks will recognize the stadium in the background and the parking lot. So College, Kimball, we're looking back to the southeast here. This entry feature will be at both the north and the south leg of the intersection. Again, a welcoming sign with Kansas State University, entry monuments with landscaping, trees in behind. And then you'll start to notice the corridor on both sides. Dedicated solid knee wall on the south side adjacent to Athletics in this case. And then on the Ag Agronomy side, there's a detail here where the knee wall will actually start to separate between a 60-foot, 40-foot split. We do have a double row of trees. They stagger. If you recall, we did reduce some of the landscaping about midway through the process on this design in order to facilitate a broader tree planting plan that would allow for those trees to grow into that area. Again, another view of that intersection a little bit lower. This gives you a view on the north side adjacent to agronomy of that 60/40 split between knee wall plantings and then turf and trees on the north side.
Jason, were that on your last one, on the north side where I could be mistaken about this, but isn't there like a fairly deep ditch like right there?
Yeah, and Brian and Rob could talk about it. There are stormwater improvements that are taking place on both sides and there will be a lot of grade that is filled there. There's a white picket fence that's there adjacent to the sunflower field and that's where that knee wall will start to take shape. And then on the south side, again, just that solid knee wall with plantings on both sides, turf that'll be irrigated and trees that'll line the corridor. One additional item that we haven't talked a whole lot about that's in your packet is a memorandum of understanding for irrigation and the maintenance of the landscaping within the right-of-way. We have created a document and shared it with K-State and K-State Athletics about the maintenance of all the amenities within the right-of-way. To maintain, replace, and repair is a responsibility that Kansas State and Athletics have tentatively agreed to. We've agreed then to provide water for the area to keep the area irrigated and keep it in a fashion that's presentable to the community and to the university. I just wanted to highlight those as we're into these components.
Jason, just one second. So you said we would provide the water. So how much area are we talking about as far as the water?
So in your packet, there is, I believe, a map that should show you all.
I don't think we got that map, but it basically is trickle irrigation to the trees.
Yeah, and it covers the entire North Campus Corridor. So there are phases in map, on the map, that show where Athletics is responsible, the university is responsible, Foundation, which would be responsible for their areas as we move forward. So essentially, it relieves park and rec staff from having to go up within the right-of-way and maintain that property. It'll be the adjacent owner's responsibility. What we're looking for, just formalizing that agreement. But the water, yes, would be part of what our obligation would be. We would meter that water, so we would have an accounting of it, but we would not charge the university for that water in our right-of-way. It's a very similar thing that we do on Fourth Street in downtown and eventually in Aggieville, where we do provide that water for that right-of-way landscaping. But again, we wanted to formalize it with this agreement.
I just wanted to know where the barriers were, the extent of it. But I guess we'll find out in one of the other packets or how?
I have the map. I thought we had it in the packet. I can.
It's not as important right now, but I just would like to.
Yes.
See that I may have missed it. I thought I saw.
Doesn't look like I got it added. I can pull, I'll pull it up on my computer and load it during the next speaker and then we'll bring it back up. My apologies.
Thank you.
So I wanted to run through all those images so you know what it is you're considering this evening. I'll move through these slides fairly quickly. I know we have a lot to get to this evening. But I just wanted to give you an overview of where we've been the last six and a half years and address these four components. As we've mentioned, since 2013, we've worked with the university, the athletic department, the foundation, and the city. We've hired multiple consultants to assist us with financial analysis, economic impact analysis, different concepts for the entire corridor as it pertained to hardscape, streetscape, lighting, just a number of different studies, video, and then the final design segments that you're considering this evening. Multiple users along Kimball, College, Denison, and North Manhattan. It really comprises of that north boundary of the university along with multiple different user groups with a lot of different interests throughout the community. So why the North Campus Corridor? When we got together, we wanted to create a safe, consistent, and appealing experience, not only for our vehicles, but for our pedestrians. There are a lot of areas within the North Campus Corridor that currently today don't have adequate pedestrian amenities. There are a lot of intersections and crosswalks that are just not that safe. We have enhanced those. We've created new intersections. We've tried to give the pedestrian just as much of attention as we are the vehicle. And as Brian highlighted, there's a lot of activity. You know, we have over 20,000 cars per day that travel down Kimball. So that in itself addresses much more than just game day weekends. We have a significant number of vehicles and citizens up and down this corridor every day. I don't think we can ignore the fact that beautifying this area could help with recruitment, retention, not only for students and athletes, but for employment, faculty, and staff. When we start to look around at what other universities are doing and the partnerships that they've formed, Oklahoma State and Iowa State come to mind as things we've seen over the last few years as we compare ourselves in the Big 12. Oklahoma State had this published right on their website and they really understood the features that these interactive right-of-way areas on campus or adjacent to campus and how important they are. I just wanted to share that with you. I came across it. It's something that we've been holding on to, but they've dedicated themselves to this in their attempt to recruit and retain. TopManagementDegrees.com also suggested schools should also invest in beautifying their campuses and understand why students consider those aesthetics and functionality of a school's campus when considering enrollment. And they often talk about the sports programs, the academic rankings, and the research qualifications when they're advertising to those potential students. But I thought it was very interesting that this site highlighted the aesthetics and the atmosphere in which you travel to or walk to on campus in that community. This is a study that was done by the Board of Regents in Iowa and they really, it was just completed in October of 19. The full report there is highlighted as a link. But there was a very interesting executive summary with this paragraph in it that really looked back to the taxpayers at how much of an impact universities make, not only to the community they're in, but to the entire state. And that rate of return and that $2,000, that dollar that's invested in public money in Iowa State for fiscal year 17 through 18, taxpayers will receive a cumulative value of $2.60 over the course of that student's working life. That's an internal rate of return for the taxpayer, 6.8%, which according to this study, compared favorably to other long-term investments by the public and private sectors. I think clearly, other states are looking at the impact of universities and how significant. I think clearly, other states are looking at the impact of universities and how significant they are to their economies as well as Kansas's. And we recognize just how much of an influence K-State has, not only in Manhattan, but across the state. As Brian mentioned, just quick stats, and in 2000, we were at 14,640 cars on Kimball. Since 2010, we've been around 20,000 cars. And as Brian mentioned in his memo about likely today at a D or an F at peak times, and then again, the accident and injury data. We spent a lot of time coming up with a budget and an estimate for north campus corridor. 43 million is where we stand today. Curb-to-curb improvements, total 20 million of that 43 million. Curb-to-curb, this, these are the lanes, these are the sidewalk, not the sidewalks, but the curb-to-curb improvements, all the driving lanes, all the medians, all the intersection improvements, the signalization. What we could traditionally look at as the city's responsibility as you move forward to replace what's there. We have aging infrastructure, as Brian and Rob pointed out. That pavement condition index is not getting any better. We know we're going to have to invest in this infrastructure. Coming back with features and infrastructure that'll last us 30, 40 years is part of this analysis and part of why we see what we do at these intersections. These are investments we're going to have to make eventually. It's a project much like I liken to West Anderson, a project that stood out there for over a decade, recognizing we needed to make that improvement. That $7.5 million we spent on West Anderson, I have a hard time finding somebody that doesn't thank us for making that improvement. It was much needed. These are areas in which there's high congestion, and the community is looking to us to make these improvements on a daily basis. We do have 23 million that is back to curb for landscaping and hardscape and lighting and sidewalks. It's significant, but we also have partners who are ready to help us invest. That 23 million is 34 million in debt service, principal and interest. We have 10 coming from the City University, three from athletics, which is roughly a third of that total behind the curb total for debt service, principal and interest. We have a partner willing to invest in those. They see them as important, just as we've seen them as important as creating a sense of place in the north campus corridor. Project before us this evening, $7.5 million award being considered. We have $2 million that we have spent or will spend to bury power lines. We made that commitment on college. The university and athletics have an update on where they're at with soccer and baseball and where they'll be investing further along that corridor. If we buy down with the revenues we've received in 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023, as I've highlighted in those charts that are in your packet, we can save $2 million in interest and bond this project for a total of 12 million over 10 years. Principal and interest will reduce from 14 million to 12 million if we capture those revenues and buy down that principal, and then debt service for 10. We have $3.5 million plugged in from the City University Fund. We'll take in a half million a year, but we're advocating using 350 of that for this first 10. $3 million from athletics will be 300,000 for a 10-year period, which won't start until 2022. We have water, street sales tax money, and storm dedicated to the financing as well. Street sales tax money will essentially replace those eastern two lanes of college from Dickens to basically the start of the project. It's a area of pavement that, when you talk to Brian and Rob, it's in need of repair today as well. So we've advocated for the use of that revenue stream. $2 million Economic Development Fund, again, using that along with other revenue streams to buy down that debt can help us keep that bond and interest mill levy supported debt at 2.3 million. In effect, we get a $14 million project with traditional financing and no revenue sources for 2.3 million when it comes to the property taxpayer for this community. We have enough other revenue sources available to us in this strategy to keep this impact on the taxpayer to a minimum. As Brian pointed out, if we're just going to show up to that intersection next year, not do this project, he's got a $1 million mill in overlay. We're leveraging a $14 million project for 2.3 for our property taxpayers' investment. The future. Several phases. Kimball West, we're currently in final design. That'll pick up from where we stop at Gate 5 and head east to Rowing. That's the next segment that Brian showed you that we're currently under design. Kimball East is where we have the KDOT money to help us with widening those lanes and the median to separate that traffic that's head-on and a very high safety concern for the community. Kimball and Dennison intersection, major focal point. Have current EcoDevo money already committed to this with the MBAF 5 million. There's a million and a half left over. Featured intersection, all four corners, welcome you to K-State. It is a primary gateway into the community and another $9 million project. North Manhattan segments already complete from, basically, close, well, yeah, actually to, from Kimball to Research Park Drive, first phase, Research Park Drive to Baker's Way, just completed. Next segment, Baker's Way to Claflin, moving south. That's currently in final design. If everybody can have patience with us again this summer, we'll try to get that done. We'd have to close North Manhattan again to accomplish that. I, I can imagine everybody behind me is so excited for that to happen again. Dennison from North Manhattan, a Jardine, also included in that future phase. This is that chart that we had provided you some time ago, and you can start to see the design for these things, as I've mentioned, highlighted here. What you'll also start to see is we're, we're starting to get behind a little bit. 2020, we were supposed to be under construction for the west end of Kimball Avenue. That could happen, but it has to tie into a financing plan. That's a significant investment. We're under design. It's something that could come forward, but it, it's going to take additional strategy moving forward. We recognize all the investments, both in the streetscape and the actual roadway improvements are significant moving forward. We do think, and as I mentioned, nine is where we should be under construction on that, that chart for 2020, and then move to 10, 11, and 12 and 13. Big numbers, big picture, 10 million College and Kimball, 9 million Kimball and Dennison, 15 million between Kimball East and Kimball West, 6.5 for North Manhattan, 2.5 for that last segment on Dennison. We need a strategy moving forward. There's no doubt about that. With the .3 failing, we come back to some discussion that we've had before about the economic development tax renewing and how much of that can be dedicated towards projects like North Campus, projects like Aggieville, infrastructure-related projects where we know we have aging infrastructure, but they're adjacent to growth areas. Aggieville, research and, and the Foundation Office Park, the Foundation Research Park, athletics, they'll highlight the millions of dollars they've invested and plan to invest. Looking at that EcoDevo renewal will be critical moving forward. And we, it's going to take a lot of conversation between the five of you, the next commission, and Chamber of Commerce, and the community. A lot of discussion. Somehow, some way, we've got to determine whether we're going to go with the county, whether we're going to go on our own as a city. There's a big difference between 3 million a year and 5 million a year and what you can accomplish over a 10-year period. We have to start having these conversations as they pertain to both Aggieville and North Campus corridor. If it's the city, if we're able to use a significant portion of this for infrastructure-related projects and debt relief, there's potential to have funding sources there for a future strategy as we move through the remaining segments of North Campus. Just a graphic to give you a, a brief look at how we handle that 30 million today. You keep roughly the same percentage of debt relief. You could actually increase it to 15 million and look at economic development from a $35 million perspective. Some conversations we've had with, with folks in the community, they kind of see our approach to infrastructure as debt relief anyway. There's a lot of projects we've dedicated Economic Development Funds towards because they're adjacent to growth areas. Some folks in the community see that as debt relief too. It's infrastructure. It's aged. You need to replace it. The real determining factor in my mind is what are we going to set aside for economic development, which is really the jobs portion of our equation? The last 10, the last 20, we can look and see how much we've spent, but that conversation has to start, and we need to engage. And I do believe the chamber is starting. I do believe they have some committees formed. They're going to start that dialogue. Hopefully be back in front of you all soon. As I mentioned, just opportunities. I, I would point out the conference center is an interesting community discussion. It falls in line with where the conversations were for the Douglas Center. It falls in line with where we're at for North Campus corridor, because prior commissions set aside a million and a half for the conference center. The expectation then for the remaining $8 million was for the community at large to pick that up. We issued $35 million in debt for downtown. City at large supported debt. It didn't have an EcoDevo tag to it. There was an assumption, and some of these projects coming off for the 10 years are actually projects we did for downtown redevelopment, part of that 35 million that has been supported by the mill levy and the bond and interest. That's the cycle we're talking about. We're 10 years removed from some of that debt. It's coming off. How much do we want to assume moving forward with projects such as North Campus, Aggieville Airport, and others that we have to consider? But the conference center is an annual decision. I come back to my point. It's an annual decision the five of you make every year when you pass the budget, knowing it's in the bond and interest, knowing if you don't put EcoDevo in there, you've got a mill levy discussion to have. The majority of you have pledged significant dollars out of EcoDevo into that bond and interest fund to offset that mill levy increase. Those decisions are made by you on an annual basis. We issued that debt in 2012. We're seven years removed, and we're still debating how to fund certain projects out of certain revenue streams. My point is, future commissions will continue to do that. Even though debt won't hit until 2024, 2025, and 2026, those governing bodies will be doing exactly what you're doing, looking at the total macro, what available, what would the mill levy have to support, what else do we have available to us? Those conversations will happen, and they'll continue to happen throughout the course of time. Actually, this evening, we're looking for authorization and approval to a contract with Wildcat Construction, $7.5 million. We do have January 14th set aside as a work session to talk about that .3 not passing. How do we move forward with the six projects that we identified in that education campaign? We have some strategies. We'd like to share them with you. We'd like to get your reactions to some of those strategies. Most of them are very optimistic moving forward, and I do think we can minimize the impact on the mill levy and the bond and interest, but we need to get feedback. We need partnerships. We need to talk about what opportunities we have in the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions now. I know we have a couple more presentations, but, but K-State just has a few slides and a video for you this evening.
Wanted you to go over this?
Yes. So we gave you three options to consider in, in the handout. Option number one is a 14-year strategy, and as I mentioned, we have a $10 million principal. We're advocating for the years 20 through 2023, the revenue streams that are available to us be captured and applied towards the principal. Be like making a down payment on the loan. If we capture half essentially of what is coming in on City University, half in that four-year period, what will come in, 600,000 from athletics, dedicate four years of the water, storm, and street sales tax, and the 2 million from EcoDevo, we can take that principal from 10 million to 5.8 million. Then we essentially debt service 5.8 million over a 10-year period. Continued revenue streams from City University totaling 3.5 million, continuing revenue streams from athletics, continuing the revenue streams from the city sources, and then showed the difference that would need to be made up by the bond and interest. Stays at around 116,000 until the final four years where it notches up due to the revenue streams in the other areas fading out. Second scenario is essentially just making that value, the same amount of bond and interest, property tax are used in both scenarios. It just makes it a consistent value all the way through. So I just applied the 10-year run on the balance in all these funds as revenue streams. It's essentially the same totals as there are above. We just push off that mill levy potential impact out in the future. The 15-year scenario increases obviously our bond and interest by about a half a million dollars. It's more interest over a longer period of time. All the other revenue sources essentially stay close to the same. Looks like my last year didn't make it into the calculation, but it is a full 3 million in K-State athletics. But you're doing the same thing in all of them. You're capturing revenue for four years, you're buying down the principal, and you're debt servicing either for 10 or 15 years.
For the, on scenario one, for the water and sewer and the street sales tax, how much of that is the street sales tax versus water and sewer? And then second part of that question, the, I'm assuming the last time that we saw projections from the water and stormwater funds that this was included? It was included? Okay.
Like so?
Okay.
Ryan, you remember the breakdown on street, street sales tax, storm?
As long as it was included in the law. Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Sorry. For how many years did we get the City University Funds? Was it for 10 years or 20?
It's 20 at 500,000 per year, so it's a $10 million total.
Okay. At 500,000 a year?
Correct.
Okay.
So that'll leave 6.5 million to move on through the corridor. And there are different strategies to talk about how to spend that money and where.
Right.
As we move through. I mean, some, clearly, some of the future sections are going to have to be a combination, City University, possibly EcoDevo renewal, and mill levy.
So some of the things that we had originally discussed for this financing were billed, so that didn't happen, and star bonds. Is there potential for star bonds at all?
Well, I, I wouldn't say star bonds, but there are potential for us to access additional state grants. Our feedback has been positive. You know, we submitted a $13 million application this, this last November. The award came out in November. We were denied on that one, but I know Jared Wassinger has been working with the state on some feedback as well as Brian Johnson, and we've received positive feedback, possibly reduced the ask, depending on how tonight goes as well as we move into future segments. Maybe not ask for 13, maybe we come back with 5.5 or 6 on a segment that would help offset. But yes, I do think there are opportunities, Commissioner, to, to look for other funding sources.
From the, that's from the Department of Commerce? Are you also talking KDOT?
KDOT.
KDOT.
KDOT, correct.
Any kind of federal grants that we might be looking at since Build is not there? There, you know, they're just passing some bills and here and there about infrastructure. I don't know if any of this would fall into those areas. Not only this part we're talking about tonight, but the 43 million.
Yeah.
That we're talking about at the bigger.
The build application provides us with just very valuable information. The build application provides us with just very valuable information. When we partnered with K-State to put that application together, it's something that we recognized in the first year, obviously not being awarded, but we had created all the necessary documentation. So when the reapply came, it was another opportunity to tweak that, fine-tune it, look at what some other communities had done, and resubmit. It's given us a great base and a foundation for us to take information and deliver it from an economic development standpoint, from a safety standpoint. So all that information and effort is going to benefit us as we move forward and look for opportunities. We will continue to scour those resources and apply for just as much as we possibly can to help us with this.
I mean, the sales tax is always there, and we'll come to that. That's something we can control. I'm thinking about the other things that we may not have control of, but might be potential revenue sources to fund this master plan. And I'm glad we got the other phases done, but I think the financing is something we will continue to have a discussion about with the university, the chamber, federal agencies, and state agencies as well. It falls on all of us to lobby for Manhattan and for the progress that we want to see
But essentially, on this funding, again, that's always my concern, is I don't have a problem, you know, with what we've done here to pay this, you know, upfront, because you're not really affecting the, you know, mill levy till, what, 2024?
Yeah.
Essentially.
That's the first.
And if you go back to our discussion on the Douglas Center and the bonds that were coming off, you know, my calculation showed 936 coming off, and we just spent 367 on the Douglas Center, which leaves us with about 569. And if we committed like 229 to that in your scenario two, which would be consistent, it would cover Phase 6. So I can support that, but it doesn't cover the other phases, because you need more money. And as Commissioner Reddy said, well, maybe some other sources will show up, but, you know, my interest tonight is, okay, we can support Phase 6, I see that being financially viable. I'm not sure we can support the rest of it unless the economic development tax is renewed. And I've already been on record as saying I support a citywide tax with the higher amount and the same sort of split we've got now. And I think that gets us out of the hole on a lot of these things, but I'm just concerned, I hate looking at any of these in isolation, because it's all the domino effect on how it works, basically. And if we were to fail in renewing the economic development tax, then there is no way to avoid a property tax increase. Just isn't, the way I calculate it.
And something along those lines, Commissioner, that I think we would really like to sit down with you all and talk about is a debt type of forecast over the next five years, even though some of your terms may not go that long, but feedback and direction on what we can expect from an overall debt perspective, with a real bright shining light on just how much of a mill levy support is bond and interest going to get. What I'd like to do, and Bernie and I have talked about this, there's a history of the bond and interest, and how much of a mill has supported the bond and interest in the last five years, the last 10, the last 20? And it just ranged a lot. Something that we also did during downtown, there's a bond and interest cash balance. It allows you to siphon off money and carry it until you need it, and you can actually cushion your impact on the levy itself. We have a very, pretty healthy cash balance in the bond and interest fund. We need to talk about a strategy, how to maintain a certain level of cash balance in that fund, what type of mill levy the governing body is going to be able to support moving forward, and then we can provide you different financing options with the use of those property tax dollars. We've got a lot on the horizon, and we recognize with the Point 3 failing, that discussion is going to be even more critical moving forward.
Even further than just forecasting debt, though, I mean, we get updates, we get updates in isolation, to Commissioner Butler's point, on where all the funds stand, but even when I was reading this, I was finding myself having to remind, well, if I say yes to this, how much is left in the Economic Development Fund? And if I say yes to the next agenda item, how much is left in the Economic Development Fund? And I didn't really understand if this was already projected in the water or in stormwater funds. And so, to the point I think all of us have made several times, it's been really difficult to go through this process in this way, because you almost don't know how the previous decision you just made is going to affect one that you have to make next week that you didn't know you had to make. And so, it's been difficult in that regard. But this was laid out, and this was laid out a little bit more clearly, but I just, I think that's critical if you're going to do that with the next commission, just to take it a step forward and regularly show updates on all of those funds, and how, when you're projecting those in, where the balance is it's going to leave.
We're getting sophisticated enough, and we're getting complicated enough, I don't disagree with you. We have a lot of balls in the air right now with a lot of major decisions, and we need to have that broad perspective. I would say even in the ECO DEVO fund, on the 14th of January, it has to be clearly part of the discussion. There's a beginning fund, there's a balance right now that we budget for 2020, $6 million, unexpended dollars. We know we have $2 million of that committed, so there's really a $4 million balance. But what that balance doesn't take into account is the $457,000 we're getting from Vet Med every year to pay for the IC building, which will be $5.6 million in total when we're done with that. This is another revenue stream we've got to factor into a balance in the ECO DEVO fund. You've got $1 million sitting there from the '95 Medofat. So we, yeah, there are resources there, we have to factor into the conversations as we look at this globally. We have some members from K-State that are going to present this evening. I would ask them at this point to...
President Myers, are you going to do this one?
I'll kick things off.
Okay, yes, sir.
Mayor Dotson and Commissioners, this is not the first time I've come before you to talk about North Campus Corridor, but we've made a lot of progress since then. I'm here representing the team, I'll introduce the team, and they'll get to their business. We won't make this any longer than we have to make it. One of the things that I think we're all very proud of, that this effort is a true partnership for the university, for its affiliates, the city, the region, and the state. I've always taken great pride, not that I had a lot to do with it when I got here, but that our town-gown relationship is recognized by always surveying out as number one or two in the nation, and people point to it all the time. Jason mentioned Oklahoma State, and they've done a nice job of beautifying their campus, but I was down there for our football game with them, unfortunately we lost, and being taken around by Oklahoma State folks, and I asked the athletic director, Oklahoma State Athletic Director, I said, "So what's your relationship with Stillwater?" The city says, "Oh, it's awful." And I'm thinking, wow, to have to live in an environment like that and have what he described as an awful relationship, I took him at his word, maybe it's better than that. But as I ask around, no, it's kind of contentious. Here, it's a much different situation, and we're really proud of that relationship. This North Campus Corridor is really critical to our future economic vitality. And when I say "our," it's not just K-State, it's Manhattan, it's the region, it's the county, and all those industry partners that we are bringing in now and will bring in in the future that will be drawn to this place because of either the intellectual expertise we have at the university, or NBAF, or quality of life, and so forth. So this is the key to kind of get that all started. As you know, and you've just heard, I mean, there's a lot, and you've been part of all this, a great deal of time has been spent just in the planning, and I think we are at a critical decision point tonight. If I want to change the slide to the next one? How about that? Was that magic? Somebody else do that? I did hit a button. The goal's never really changed. We really want to have a competitive advantage here in Manhattan, so we can draw the kind of industry that will be attracted because of NBAF, but also because of the university, and again, the quality of life here in Manhattan. This is moving us towards those strategic goals that I think everybody had in mind when NBAF, when the federal government said that was going to come to our community. It really is a competitive advantage. You can see what's already happening along North Corridor with those, some improvements, few improvements that have been made, and also down Manhattan, we've got the Department of Agriculture there, now we've got the Ag Lab going up in that research park, we're renovating a part of a building, I think it's half a million dollars, to prepare for our physician's assistant school. That's all part of this North Campus Corridor, and it's going to be a real center of mass for, we think, some economic vitality that we haven't seen in a long time. As you remember, in 2016, we asked the GAI consultants to look at what impact this vision was going to have out to 2035, and their estimate was 3,500 to 5,000 direct, indirect, and induced jobs to the community. There are not many projects in this state that can say, any consultant would say, you're going to attract 3,500 to 5,000 jobs, and we've already attracted some of those jobs. And generally, and the majority of them are high-paying, high-quality type jobs. So this is a heck of an opportunity for all of us, and as you'll see in a few minutes, we've already started down this road and added some jobs. I think Greg will talk to you, Greg Lorenz will talk to you a little bit more about it. This is the timeline, 2013, Jason and Engineer talked about starting then. We're into implementation as we speak, so we're at the right part of this chart. I know you're really familiar with all that, and we very much appreciate that this could never be done by the university alone, that this is a partnership, and we're very appreciative of that partnership and all the discussions that have to go around, the financing of this, and so forth. We think we're at the stage where we need this financial commitment for this particular phase, so we can keep this project moving on. It's already extended for various reasons, so we'd like to get this done, because companies are coming and they're looking, and they want to have an environment where they feel comfortable for their employees and for the work that they want to get done. This is, this Kimbolden College is the next big step. We know it's a significant investment, but we think it's a solid investment in economic growth for our community. That's the whole part, and why I'm so excited about this. So I'd ask for your support tonight, so we can move ahead for this particular phase. I'd like to introduce Greg Lorenz, he's Senior Vice President at our Kansas State University Foundation, and their Chief Financial Officer. He's going to talk about how far we've come, and kind of where we plan to go moving K-State and Manhattan forward. So Greg?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dotson, Commissioners. Building on President Myers' goal, I will spend a couple minutes reviewing how this project can have a profound impact on the health and vitality of the community. I'll focus on three main points. First, we'll review where we've been, impact just since the corridor started, the initiative project started, and just a little bit of a lens on where we're headed for the future.
We recognize the importance of a close, elaborate relationship between a university and its community. We have never, and we will never, lose sight of our commitment and responsibility to improve the lives of all Kansans. We will continue to build partnerships with industry that have a profound impact on the health and vitality of Kansas communities. We must be a leader in providing what Kansas needs, and frankly, we need to do more.
It's pretty amazing to see what's happened, and just, most of those buildings are in the last six years. As we review the four latest projects since the corridor started, I'll just let the pictures and images talk for themselves. These four projects alone have injected $250 million of economic impact into the Manhattan community since the initiation of the corridor project. Additionally, two of these projects provided $325,000 of new property tax in 2019. This is just the beginning. We stand ready to develop creative solutions and build homes for up to 5,000 jobs in this corridor, creating new facilities that will house these jobs. Those facilities will require a half a billion or 500 million of investment just in the facilities outside of the infrastructure. This creates incredible opportunities, but comes with its challenges. For example, when the Kansas Department Agriculture Headquarters relocated from Topeka, the primary road shut down within months of the building opening. Infrastructure projects have been trailing the buildings and resulting new jobs rather than being out in front of them. We must face this challenge as we look towards the future and prepare for growth. We are working on a significant partnership and transaction up at the research park that would basically take us to finishing out the research park at a pace in the next two years. As Jason highlighted, and already the work on the North Campus Corridor, it is phenomenal that the North Manhattan roadway improvements adjacent to the park are nearly complete, allowing for ease of access for this opportunity. We believe it's imperative for modernized infrastructure to be in place to support coming growth and allow community members and industry partners to easily move in and around the corridor. We could not bring these companies in and jobs without the infrastructure. Next, you will hear from Jeremy Neder-Wardner, Senior Associate Athletic Director for Facilities and Capital Projects, with an overview of the K-State Athletics' impact for the corridor. Thank you for your time.
My name is Jeremy Neder, I'm a Senior Associate Athletics Director for Kansas State Athletics, and I've been an advocate since day one, and the partnership between the city, the community, and K-State, and the designers in whole, and this partnership has just been a phenomenal process since day one. I just want to briefly discuss our current master plan that we issued here about a year and a half ago, and where we currently stand in the future of K-State Athletics. Currently, as you guys can see, we issued this master plan about a year and a half ago, and I just want to talk about a little bit of the progress, where we currently are. The RV Christian Track Complex, it's a $4 million renovation of the track, was just completed last November, and we'll be hosting the Big 12 Track Championships this coming May. The soccer stadium, it's a 1,400-seat stadium complex off of college that's impacted by the corridor, the college, just phase of the master plan itself. It was a $10 million stadium, 1,400 seats, and that was just completed in November. And we've got an ongoing baseball stadium project that's going to be completed in January, another $10 million. Future work, starting this February, we're working through a design process for this south end zone of the Bill Snyder Family Stadium that ties directly into Bramledge that shares amenities between both facilities. That's about a $50 million job, we'll be starting that come February and finishing that in June of 2021. This is just a rough overview of our master plan. Roughly, we have about $230 million we're projecting over the next eight to 10 years. And as Greg and the other team members mentioned, it's a fast-paced, aggressive platform that we're all setting this bar high to increase the community, you know, the economy of the community and whatnot. But I can tell you, not only the people in this room, but our supporters, the K-State supporters, they have tremendous interest in this core project, and what it does for athletics, the university, and the rest of our facilities, and all of our athletes. Just want to briefly talk about how this phase currently affects our current project. Right now, with the partnership, we've worked with the design process with BG and Confluence, some of our existing facilities were communicated with the design team, and we have certain parameters that we've stopped in order to accommodate the new bus lane. So if this project's not moved forward, we'll kind of be in a temporary status. We're currently, you know, the commission approved the underground power lines, it's a tremendous effort, and that's ongoing, and I think in the next two to three weeks, the rest of the poles will be down along college. So I feel like this project was approved back then, we made that initial investment, and this is just another aspect to completing that project. But some of the temporary conditions we're going to be faced with if we don't approve this is obviously the pilaster fence that... obviously the pilaster fence that we tie into, highlighted in yellow there at the new bus stop. We've got a new playground that's along the third base side. We're using some of those fence lines, those parameters, to offset some of those costs that we shared between both the two projects. So we're hoping that we can keep on pushing this thing forward. The goal was to complete this project around the same time so we could share those features and share some of the costs within the partnership of the design. So, and then obviously, just some miscellaneous sidewalk stuff that's not too big of a deal down college. And the other safety aspect, the guys hit on the safety aspect of this. You know, one thing we originally discussed was widening all these sidewalks. You know, I know Jason's talked about a lot of the curb-to-curb. A lot of our interest is the back of curb. And it's not only, you know, the beautification. I get that's a huge aspect of this project. But it's also widening the sidewalks, right? Getting, taking those sidewalks essentially from five-foot to 10-foot and pushing that traffic, or that pedestrian traffic away from college, right? So all those kids and, you know, 50,000 fans and the 1,400 fans going to soccer and 12 to 1,400 fans going to baseball, they're all against that parallel traffic along college. And by widening all these sidewalks, improving the access into the parking lots, it's another safety aspect. The lighting along college, right, and along Kimball, those are all safety aspects to all the fans that are coming to the games. So I hope you guys will pass this and continue this great partnership we have going on. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeremy. All right. Well, I think we're through the presentation. So we'll come back to the Commission to see if there are comments or questions, and then we can go to the public.
I do have a question that is minor compared to what we're talking about. But I'm interested in the Marlette House as a historic kind of preservation project. And I wondered if that's in your master plan at K-State. It's there at the corner of Dickens and College. It's an old stone house and an old barn. And I think it's being used for storage. But that's okay, as long as it's preserved. And if that's your, I just wondered about your intention to preserve it. And I've been asked by about five people, so that's why I'm asking.
I've been asked about the project myself. That is a historic site, so it has some stipulations on what can be done with it. It is not in the current master plan.
No, that's, I just wondered.
So, but because of some of the historic preservation that has to go on with the building, there's certain things that can and can't be done with it. But we're also questioned about it. But it's not in any plan right now.
I, thank you. That's just reassuring. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, well, at this point, let's ask for a public comment. So anyone wishing to comment on this item, please come forward. All you have to do is tell us your name and where you live and write it in the book. We'd love to hear from you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Commission. I am Kent Glasscock. I'm President of Kansas State University's Research Foundation. I'm joined here this evening with my vice, the board's Vice Chair, Dr. Sue Peterson, who has been integral to this process, as Ron and Jason know, from the very beginning, six and a half seemingly long years. As I thought about this evening, since I've been here a long time, I've thought that, and reminded myself that, nothing of significance in terms of catalyst projects in this community over the last 30 years has been done without the City Commission's leadership. This governing body has gone at risk on multiple occasions to help secure our community's future. Think back. Downtown Redevelopment I, Downtown Redevelopment II, four-laning of the road to I-70, four-laning of the road to Wamigo. And with every one of those projects and initiatives, Kansas State University has stayed by your side. We have supported one another over the course of the last 30 years to good effect. Nothing in this community that is big like NBATH has happened without a city governing body, community, business community, and Kansas State University locking arm in arm. None of these endeavors were sure bets. We all went at calculated risk. And I think it's time that we do that once again. The corridor, 5,000 jobs. Some people say that is lunacy, that we cannot do that. Kansas State University doesn't agree. Mr. Mayor, you have had two university presidents now come before you for the sixth time and said, give us the tools and we will do this together. And by 2035, we have created 5,000 new jobs at roughly a pay scale of $75,000 a year. K-State believes so strongly in this that we've gone at risk. And we are going at risk. The City-University Fund has been mentioned earlier. That's $10 million. K-State Athletics is committing $3 million. The K-State Foundation is building speculative office space with the expectation that we will fill those offices with employees. And we will attract companies to campus and to the community. Just this year, in the Kansas State University Research Foundation, we have added staff to operationalize the strategies that will help to create those jobs. We've gone at risk. We have added staff to the tune of $300,000 a year. Kansas State University believes in this, believes in the community, believes in the project, and believes we can create those jobs. We've come a long way together in the last six and a half years. We have been partners. It's been a great partnership. But tonight is the time that we have to ask you to lead once again. You have to begin the North Campus Corridor with a college-Kimball project. We've always stood by your side. And tonight, Kansas State University is asking you to stand with us. It is important, it is audacious, some say lunacy. We say we're going to get it done. Let me close just by saying, really a question. If not the North Campus Corridor idea, what idea? And without a goal of 5,000 jobs at $75,000 per, what goal? Help us be your partner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Kent. Anyone else, please?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Wayne Sloan, and I'm here in my capacity of Chairman of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. For a number of years, we have encouraged this Commission to be mindful of its expenditures from the Economic Development Funds. In general consensus of our members was that it is important to maintain a strong balance in that fund in order to facilitate economic development projects that created jobs. As you are aware, with our completion of the Region Reimagined in 2018, the Chamber and its partners began working towards a new vision of economic prosperity. In this vision, we want to build a community that is attractive for people to live, work, play, retire, as well as one that can attract new and unique employers and entrepreneurs. Because of this vision, we presented you a different set of priorities last summer. These included helping fund the key elements of Region Reimagined, which we will be discussing later. Consider making an investment in the projects that will serve as catalyst projects to create quality jobs. As we mentioned in our statement, we consider the North Campus Corridor to be one of those projects. It is still imperative that we help with the programming and funding the hunt to help with these 5,000 jobs that we are hoping to attract to our community. However, we felt that it was important to reiterate our position that the North Campus Corridor is a catalyst for jobs, and we support using economic development funds for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Anyone else? All right. We'll close publicly, comment, and come back to the Commission.
I want to ask Jason, just to be sure I've got this right in my mind, trying to come up with a funding strategy. You mentioned the Economic Development Fund. You know, we've got a $6 million balance right now on paper, but we've committed $2 million to this project based on your scenarios?
No, that's a previous commitment. So $4 million is what we have as basically available.
Okay, so these scenarios on this strange piece of paper, does that take two out of that four?
It would.
Okay, so that gives us a balance of two.
You got to factor in the other 457 coming in for IC. But yeah, that 5.6 has not been factored into that.
And that's why I'm trying to get a picture for, you know, as we look at all these projects, where are we? Because my goal still is not to increase the amount of money that goes in that bond and interest. We can keep it stable. I can probably live with that. I just don't want it to go up. And so I think that's important. Now, your funding scenario is, I like the second one better, simply because it doesn't have that balloon payment that's going to sneak up and slap somebody, you know, for two years at the end. And so I prefer the second one for that because I don't care for the balloon payment. And then there's always the caveat that if the Economic Development Tax is renewed, then, you know, that can be relooked, especially if it's citywide. So there's some options there. And I know there's still some irons in the fire on grants. But I don't have a problem with, you know, using Scenario Two to fund this. But that's just Phase Six. That doesn't mean, you know, there's a funding plan for the rest of it. We got to figure that out in the future. But that's where I'm at right now. And I also think it's very important, the point that was made, that we're going to end up spending a million dollars on this anyway if we do mill and overlay. And we got to maintain the road with that PCI. And so I think this works. And I've gotten a number of emails from people that oppose this and say, don't vote for it. But many of them don't understand all the various funding sources, especially the Investment City-University Fund. And that's a huge amount. Athletics putting in $3 million, that's a big deal. And a lot of individuals think that the KSU Foundation buildings are all tax-free, which is not the case, as was shown in one of the slides. And so that's an ingredient that's not here. We are getting some property tax dollars that are not on this chart, that contribute to the city portion. And so, you know, as I look at this, if, you know, we follow through with some bonds coming off, we should be able to absorb this and the Douglas Center without raising that bond and interest fund. And that should work. It's just the other things that, you know, are coming out in the future. But I'm okay right now with incrementally taking a couple of bites out of that North Campus Corridor. And the other important thing that was briefed by Public Works is, you know, 20,000 cars a day going through there. And a lot of people have sent me emails saying that this is just for K-State Athletics. That's 20,000 cars going up and down that road every day from one end of town to the other. And I can just imagine when NBATH is full up and, you know, it's 4:30, 5 o'clock, and 300 cars go out of there, they're not going to want to drive through campus. They're going to have to turn on that road. And so I just think it's absolutely essential. And then that grading, if you've got it rated, you know, by the MPO as a D and it's going to become an F, that'd be disaster if that road becomes an F. So I think incrementally, we have to go with this Phase Six. And then we got to get creative and figure out how to fund the rest of it in the future. But that doesn't have to be decided tonight.
Jason, just for my clarification, is the current balance of the Economic Development Fund $6 million? Or is it the projected balance?
So when we talk about the fund, there's an amount that we have as a balance that's unexpended. But there are portions of it that are committed.
Yeah.
When we talk about $6 million being a balance, $4 million of that 6 is not committed.
Got it. And so I guess my question is, we're still accumulating funds today, right? Like, we're not, the $6 million isn't tacking on what we're still bringing in, correct?
Correct. You have two more years.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that. I, one thing that I'm happy that kind of came through tonight, but I think that we've somewhat lost is, to Win's point, we, I am the city representative on the MPO, and we have talked about this area in terms of, we review fatalities and injuries every year on all of our major roadways. And this has always been a little bit an issue area in Manhattan. And I used to live over where Public Works is highlighting today. I used to live in the apartments right across the street from the stadium. And I always remember that intersection being an issue during busy times. There are other portions of Kimball that we need to address that are issues, particularly that curve that happens during busy times of the day. Every time I drive down that road, I'm just thinking, I hope the person across from me does not mess up. Because if they mess up or I mess up, something bad's going to happen. And so I'm glad that, this is an important economic development issue, but it's also a safety issue, right? And we should always, as a government, have a goal of reducing and eliminating traffic fatalities. I think the way that we have come up to fund this is a solid, good strategy, particularly with the fact that even if the Economic Development Fund in its renewal doesn't pass, it gives the Commission, the future Commission, a couple of years to prepare for that, to figure out how they're going to fund that out of the bond and interest if they choose to do that, instead of funding it out of the renewal of the EgoDevo. So I just think it gives them a little bit of flexibility. Otherwise, the improvements that are happening there have already shocked me. I've lived here for 10 years. I used to work in the old Foundation in the Communications Department. And I drive down by that new Foundation building. I'm just like, dang, like I messed out. So I'm excited about the future of that area, and I'm excited to be a partner in this and seeing all the growth that's happening. So I look forward to voting yes.
The North Campus Corridor was committed to, I don't know about the grammar for that, but even before I was elected in 2015, there was a commitment to support it. And I feel like I have continued and will support the North Campus Corridor. I'm pleased with the solution we have tonight. I too support Option Two. Those balloon payments at the end drive me crazy. And so I, we have to continue to put these puzzle pieces together. And we do that with this partnership. And we have that relationship with Fort Riley also and our surrounding communities. And I support that effort to help each other. So I do believe, as Kent said, that the university and the city's partnership has paid huge dividends for this community. And I believe that it will continue to pay those dividends. So I will vote yes.
Thank you for being here this evening. I appreciate it, all of the presenters. It shows the commitment and the importance of this project. I was here when President Schultz was also in front of us and speaking several times. We've been moving incrementally for the betterment of the community. And it is a thriving community because of the North Campus Corridor as well as NBATH. And I think that was the reason we wanted NBATH here so we could do the rest of this. The funding mechanisms seem palatable for this. And the safety concerns that we addressed as far as the fatalities and accidents, when we were looking at the City-University Fund, there was a lot of angst within that committee, as well as others, that we were going to take so much money out of that fund for these projects. But this is what exactly the projects that money would have been utilized for is for those safety concerns and infrastructure projects.
those safety concerns and infrastructure projects. So I'm glad, I feel comfortable using it for that, for that purpose, as well as the Economic Development Funds. What's before us, I think I would, I would support. I do want the university to work closely with us when we discuss online sales tax, the adverum tax. When we look for grants, whether it's at the federal level, or KDOT, or in the Department of Commerce, that we need to go together as partners and not individuals. I understand you have other burdens as far, as far as financing for higher education and tuition and of that sort. But we, we can't think of them as separate. They actually go together. If we have a wonderful North Corridor campus, you will have more students coming, you will have more people coming and spending their money here, you will have more alumni that want to get townhouses or places to stay. So it's all a collective piece, and I'm glad we're not going to just say, "We want you only for this," but for the holistic piece of Manhattan and the region. I think it benefits all of us. I hope to collect sales tax, that's what I'm seeing from this. Maybe more sales tax as more people come to our events and our games, and maybe we can sell that part of it. Right now, like I said, it's good, but for the rest of the faces, we do need to be cautious. I remember when President Schultz was also talking about the 5,000 jobs, and I see that as a reality, and that takes the chamber, Fort Riley, the region, Region Reimagine, and everybody else, on all of us to make sure we're recruiting, because we don't want to be that place where you get a minimum wage job. We want those high salary jobs, not for one individual, but their spouse. And along with that will come childcare. And along with that is the innovation place we want to be. And that's going to take a lot of years and a lot of dedication and commitment and political will. And at least from this commissioner, there is that will to make it go forward and make sure that there's no stone unturned for this purpose, because it falls on all of us to make this great. So thank you, and I do, I like the way you laid it out. I'm not really particular to one scenario or the other, but I think this is the way it's laid out. I'm comfortable with mostly Scenario One and Two. Thank you.
What we ask Ron and the staff to do, just for everyone's information, coming up in January, what we'll have is all these projects laid out kind of from left to right. Underneath each one of those project names, we'll have funding sources that we anticipate. And then we'll know the delta between kind of what we can expect and what we might have to make up. Now, there's, underneath that, we'll have these funding streams, and then underneath that, there'll be some kind of an appreciation for the debt that we currently have. So Bernie will have to correct me, but we generally are running somewhere around $270 million of debt. So underneath that, as that debt begins to come off, we'll have, that's happening already, we'll get '22, '24, '26, and that will incorporate Downtown One, Downtown Two, and that's where we're talking about some of this 900 and whatever it is, $936,000 already. So when you look at all that, then you look below that, and you'll say, "Well, what kind of impact would that have on property tax if we determined that part of that would go to pull down property tax?" So that would be, in January timeframe, a kind of a good look, not only for those remaining, but certainly for the commissioners that are coming on. One of the things that's also happened is the levy's been delayed. You know, the Corps of Engineers has so much work to do downstream that we're probably going to be deferred one more year. The airport, for good or for bad, when we looked at the coring of that, we've actually got more life in that than we anticipated, so it's not an emergency repair, it's something that we can look downstream on. So that's why I'm pointing out the importance of all this timing. As most people know, we'll do temp notes for three or four years, and that even further delays when we have to do any bonding at all. My outlook for the city of Manhattan is very positive. I think I said that a couple times already tonight, but we've got so many levers that are available to us that most people don't have. Now, another reason that I'm positive is what's happened to date. You know, as was pointed out, we've got NBAF up there, we've got KDA, we've got the Ag Labs, and we've got two foundation buildings. And if you've heard the foundation briefing, I mean, this isn't just a series of words that someone decided to slap up on a piece of paper. These are foundational. And the thing, one of the things I liked about it is includes a venture capital approach, something that, you know, you need if you're going to grow quickly. Somebody's got to believe in you and somebody with wherewithal to help you build. So I'm very positive about that. 280, 280 million over 10 years. Those of you who remember when we were having the building boom at Fort Riley, what that meant to us. The workforce out at NBAF was, I think, peaked a little lower than we thought, but still around 700 workers. Guess what that did? That filled up our hotel rooms. So when you look at the occupancy rate, that certainly helped us over this hump. So there's a lot of positive things. When we looked at ECO DEVO, a lot of what we've done in ECO DEVO have really been infrastructure. So what about the jobs? Here's a plan for jobs, good jobs and lots of them. It doesn't mean the heavy lifting's over with this first one. I mean, this is going to be a lot of, a lot of heavy work. But, you know, this partnership that we have with KSU is vital. It's vital to them, it's vital to us. So this is kind of the first step in another long journey we're going to take, maybe a little bit of risk in there, but as Kent said, this has a lot of positivity to it, and I think we ought to go ahead. So no further comments, we'll entertain the motion.
I'll read it. Okay. I move that we accept the engineer's opinion of probable cost in the amount of $8,793,935.89. A warden authorized the mayor and city clerk to execute a construction contract to Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated of Wichita, Kansas, the amount of $7,534,149.54. Authorized the mayor and city clerk to execute contract amendment number five for construction engineering service with BG Consultants Incorporated of Manhattan, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed $130,539.41, and authorized the mayor and clerk to execute a memorandum of understanding with K-State Athletics and Kansas State University for the maintenance of the right-of-way for the Kimball Avenue and College Avenue North Campus Corridor Phase Six project.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, so motion carries. Appreciate everybody coming. This is really great for us. We have a daunting agenda tonight, so we're going to take until half past the hour, take a little break here, reset the room if that's necessary, and give ourselves a little break. So we'll adjourn for 10 minutes.
All right, well, it's 10:30 and we'll get started on the next item. So, Item C, Consider a Request for Additional Economic Development Funding for Expanded Services Along with Renewal of Agreements for Economic Development and Fort Riley Promotion Services, Including Fourth Quarter Updates. We're starting with Janet.
Good evening.
Thanks.
I'm Janet from the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm your Military Community Liaison. I'm going to start off with my review of the year with the Association United States Army Annual Meeting. This year was a really great year and a large part of that has to do with the large number of, I'll say alumni, for lack of a better word, of First Infantry Division and Fort Riley soldiers who are now in very senior leadership positions in the Department of the Army. So, there's many among them, but because we know these people, including the Vice Chief of the Army, General Joseph Martin, he was the previous commanding general here at Fort Riley in the First Infantry Division, because we know people like him and Sergeant Major of the Army, Tony Grinstone, who's a former Command Sergeant Major here from here at the First Infantry Division, we had a lot of people attend our chapter events that we might typically not get, like the Chief of Staff of the Army, General McConville, and the Secretary of the Army, Ryan McCarthy, who both came to our social this year. And having that interaction with these people helps us in a social setting talk about Manhattan and the relationship we have with Fort Riley, and also encourages those senior leaders to come out here and see it for themselves, and to see the facilities on Fort Riley, and to see the interactions that happen here. So, I know this year we have had the Sergeant Major of the Army come, Tony Grinstone, we've had the Secretary of the Army come, and I know from some planning meetings that I've been to that there's other senior leaders that are going to be here very early in the year next year. So, it really is worth our while to go. We also do some Hill visits and we talk about things that are, as a defense community, instrumental between the two to happen. So, we talked this year about the Defense Community Infrastructure Program that has been an unfunded mandate for several years. It looks like this year is getting funded. We talked about wind turbine legislation. That has to do with joint land use between military facilities and making sure that air corridors are easily accessible and usable, and those are the kind of things we did. We had some really great visits on the Hill as well. So, next, the ADVISE program is up and running. It is a networking and mentoring program for soldiers transitioning out of Fort Riley who want to stay in the area. Right now, we do have 12 advisors, 10 of whom are currently paired with soldiers that are transitioning out of Fort Riley. I've worked a lot with Region Reimagined and Christie Rodriguez to get this going, and also it is a regional effort now. There's efforts in Wamigo and in Junction City as well to get this broader, to help the region as well as Manhattan. And then, next, I have some events that we had. I'm not going to go specifically with most of these. I do want to point out, that picture that is in Peace Memorial Auditorium is from Veterans' Day. We were slated to have 20 WWII veterans as our grand marshals. Unfortunately, the weather intervened and we got nine. At some point, if it's feasible, I'd like to present that picture and get it hung in that vestibule there. It was really great having them on hand and seeing them interact with ROTC students and the elementary school students that were there, performing was really amazing. We estimate that between myself and a little bit of other staff, we attended at least 184 One ID in Fort Riley events, ceremonies, remembrances, welcomes, farewells, recognitions, changes of command and responsibilities, casings, redeployment ceremonies, Fort Riley Town Halls, weekly victory welcomes, and spouse newcomer events, among other things I'm sure that I'm forgetting. We have a really good first-rate interaction with Fort Riley and the First Infantry Division. It really shows also through the monthly MRC lunch. I think I've talked earlier that we maintained our numbers all year long. I went ahead and calculated it today. We had nine MRC lunches and we had over 1,000 attendees in those, over those nine events. That's with the three brigades deployed. So, we maintained our numbers despite the deployment and the high tempo and training numbers, and I think it really just speaks to the quality of the speakers we have and the great interaction that we have, that from what I understand is really, there is an event, an event like that. I had a community member whose prior service, who was at Fort Riley, who said she had never seen an event like this in her career, where there's a monthly networking event for the community and the soldiers of the post. So, that's pretty, I'm pretty proud of that. And then, I have been working on some workforce and military transition things. I mentioned it a tiny bit with ADVISE. I participated via, with the MRC in the KEEP program, which is the Kansas Employment Exploration Program. That took some soldiers from Fort Riley and took them on a tour of K-State, some K-State facilities, MATC facilities, also toured a couple of companies here in town, and so that's a picture of them at that event there. I attend the monthly Soldier for Life Employer Networking Event on Fort Riley, hoping to catch soldiers who are transitioning out and then get them in the ADVISE program, and I work with USO Pathfinder a lot as well. That's really just a very brief overview of what I've been up to and what I've been doing. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to entertain them at this time.
Any obstacles?
Any obstacles? Here or there?
Yeah, anything you need help with or?
Well, I'm pretty busy. So, you know, getting everything done. I have some projects that I'd like to add that, you know, especially in the fall, you know, I'm just so busy and I'm an office of one. So, it's nice, I do have some help from the CBB with the Weekly Victory Welcome, and that's been very helpful promoting Manhattan to the new soldiers, to Fort Riley and what we have to offer. So, that's helpful and that's freed up a lot of my time to do some other things, but, you know, doing all the things I'd like to do and to add to my programming, that's probably my biggest obstacle.
You may have mentioned it already, but I don't remember hearing it. We were working on getting people that are in your same position from other communities and the military installations. How is that going? I know it's hard to get everybody together. That was a challenge.
We've had three Kansas Military Alliance meetings this year. December just got very busy. We're going to have a meeting in December and it's been postponed to January. Also, we had, it was being hosted in Kansas City and we had a location issue and that fudged the date as well. But, that is moving along nicely. It streamlined a bit from its original inception. It's purely military relations professionals that are either at chambers of commercees or educational facilities like K-State, KU, Johnson County Community College. We have some from Washburn as well. And we go from Wichita to Kansas City, so we have a pretty good reach for defense communities participating, and we are working on a couple of projects and we are, and Perry Wiggins, our governor's military council, has attended every meeting and is in full support of what we're aiming to do. The first thing we're trying to do is get a, to have a book of all of the resources available to soldiers that the state offers, and then what we're going to do is try to pinpoint what they know before they see the book and what they know after, what the information we've compiled. That's in the works right now. It's spearheaded by Kansas State Office of Military and Veterans Affairs, but that's in the works. And I think once we have that knowledge, not just the information in the book, but the knowledge of what we're seeing soldiers and their families, and also airmen, because this is going to be at McConnell here in Manhattan, excuse me, at Fort Riley and at Fort Leavenworth, once we know that, we'll be able to kind of take a roadmap and see what we want to proceed, what we want to focus on, what amenities we think that the state could provide that would help make us more attractive as a place to live and work and retire to.
I think it's good to have a pre and post, instead of assuming what they already know and don't know.
Exactly.
So, you can have that in one place. I'm glad that program is kind of morphing into something else where you're still collaborating with each other. So, how closely do you and Craig Bender work on some of these things, being so close to each other? Are most of your fundamental missions the same, or do you collaborate on your breakfast and your lunch and all of these things?
We collaborate usually on one lunch a year so far. We've collaborated on a breakfast as well, but it was happening in January and between weather in general in January, and also there were a couple of years, and this is another one, where the defense appropriation bills has taken time to get approved, so then there's been some workful furloughs and stoppages, and honestly, they usually happen in January, and then no one from Fort Riley can, or in support of those who can't attend due to being furloughed, they don't attend. It made it a hard, we had to cancel as many of those breakfasts as we had had. So, that I think we phased out. We might try to do something else together. I work a lot with Craig. I work well with Craig, and we support each other. I think it's a good thing. I know he comes to my MRC lunches. I attend his Mac breakfasts. We're on a ton of committees together. I mean, he's a good guy and it's going well.
And that's the only reason I ask, because he's one and you're one. It would be good to have some of that.
Well, he has an assistant.
Oh, he does?
Yeah.
Oh, well. I feel like we're failing you now. Well, we appreciate all you do. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
I'll just say that you're kind of, at least my go-to person for information about Fort Riley, and I really appreciate it. Is this coming summer a rotation period for the leadership at Fort Riley?
Yes.
Yes.
So, and also, Second Brigade is deploying in February.
Yeah.
But, there's only one brigade deployment this year. And then, well, this month, Command Sergeant Major Bishop is transferring, is PCS-ing out. He's moving to Fort Bragg. And the new Command Sergeant Major for the division, it's either Harris or Harrison, I can't recall, excuse me, he is arriving in January, and the change of responsibility, I believe, is January 24th, which is a Friday, but I'm not sure off the top of my head, but it's the last Friday of the month.
Will the garrison be changing too?
I'm not sure. The garrison, I think, will be changing.
Maybe, it's two years.
Yeah, it'll be two years, yep. So, the garrison will likely change, and then, you know, the deputy commanders all change annually. The two are switching out. The one that's been in Europe at that command is coming, I think, this weekend, and they're switching.
Okay. I just wanted to know what to expect.
Yeah, no.
Who I'll see from time to time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, that, I believe, General Koloszewski's change of command will probably be after Victory Week, which looks like it'll be in June.
Oh, June, okay.
Yeah, June is when the Army's birthday is, so it should be, when it's later in the year, it's because of the deployment or something like that.
Janet, I just want to say that I do appreciate you're easy to work with, so, and I know I can ask you anything, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Janet. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Jason.
Thank you, Commissioners. Happy to be here tonight, even, I didn't know I could stay up past 10 o'clock anymore, so, thank you for proving that I can. I'm just going to go through a few things in terms of the last six months and some of the things that have happened, and then we'll move a little bit into some projecting into the future and some of the program elements that we're going to talk about. So, this is a slide we talked about a couple of months ago, and the economic impact since, that we've tracked since Advantage Manhattan started in 2002, and over 2,300 jobs and the annual impact to local governments. How that breaks down, just as a reminder, because I think it's important to understand how jobs, and these are from the economic impact model that the city uses in terms of developing their incentives as we plug those numbers in there, but just to understand the impact of jobs and economic development on city budgets and how that happens. And so, the total impact to the city, and then multiplier, and then the direct and indirect, and how that. So, $31 for every dollar, every year invested by the city into the program. This is a chart that we show every time. It's a jobs chart, kind of shows the trends in terms of jobs. You see the spike in around 2008, that coincides with the expansion of Fort Riley, and then we have stayed relatively flat, and I think that's reflective in some of the challenges that you've had in flat revenues, some of the challenges that we see in with our small businesses in terms of keeping doors open, as we're not seeing new customers, we're not seeing growth, then just creates challenges in how people pay bills. This is a problem in Kansas, and so we pull some of the regional data as well, and this was something we pulled in August, just to look at how we related to some similar university communities as well as Kansas and Lawrence and Salina, which are, I think, closest to us in geography, and like sizes, and you see the Kansas communities typically are trailing some of our regional competitors, and so we're hopeful that some of the changes that are going on right now in the state will help us, as well as the strategic planning process that they're undertaking, the state of Kansas that hasn't had an economic development strategic plan since 1986, and they're engaged in that right now. Our own Trent Armbrust is working on that, and so we're hopeful that some of the changes going on right now at the state of Kansas, particularly with the Department of Commerce, will create a positive impact on Manhattan. In terms of some results from 2019, of course, MBTH hired their first 100. I know there was some consternation about would they be able to find enough people, and according to the reports that I had, they had about five to one in terms of applicants to job openings, and so that's a great number, and they were very happy with how that turned out. Now, the Kansas Department of Ag Lab Construction, which you heard a little bit about before. GMEP was a project we worked with Potawatomi County, and we're going to have an announcement of a new company that's going to locate in Potawatomi County that we worked on together in the next couple of weeks, so we're excited about that. Some Region Reimagined implementation we'll talk about. And then, I want to talk for a second, because I think we've undersold this a little bit in terms of an investment that the city made a number of years ago and the impact it's had on our economic development program. It's the Kansas Entrepreneurial Center. That was a building that the city bought a number of years ago at a relatively inexpensive price, a price that currently has five companies, five technology, well, four technology-based companies located in the facility that have created 33 jobs, all over $50,000. And those companies generally have located into that incubator, and to my knowledge, have never come for a subsidy. They've, the space has been the incentive for them to locate here, and so that's an example of using creative ways that we can create new value in new companies in the community. This is the KEC facility. That's the list of companies there. Diable Labs just expanded into the last space we have there, so one of the challenges is we are out of space in that facility, and so while we think one of the companies may actually move out into a larger facility, which is great, and so we may have some space available, we don't have lab space currently, particularly affordable lab space available in the market, and so it's cost us on a couple of opportunities. Manhattan Business Park, and Jason just told me, which I was unaware, that Florence has purchased the two lots across, so actually we have less available there than we did previously. We are in a precarious situation where a number of projects that we get to us were unable to respond because we don't have a suitable site or a suitable building. So, one of the things that we're going to be working on over the next year is identifying are there sites over 20, 30 acres that might be suitable for a larger employer, and hopefully maybe identify ways that we can get some of those properties under at least some sort of an agreement to sell and be able to use those as we submit on RFPs. One other item that I want to particularly focus on this report is the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership. That was a program started a couple of years ago between Potawatomi County and the Manhattan Chamber, so Riley County. Chamber, so Riley County. We have, there is an invitation also for Gary County to join and they're still evaluating the program. But we've made a lot of advancements over the last six months. We engaged Avalanche Consulting out of Austin, Texas to come in and do a target industry marketing report and make some marketing recommendations to us. They came back with four key recommendations that we need to align our partners better. There, we, while we were internally working together closely, it was hard to figure out if you were an outsider coming in, how all those entities work together. And so how we communicated that became very, becomes very important. They suggest integrating more of our agriculture roots into our brand identity, that that's agriculture, food, ag tech is really big right now. And so we should highlight the fact that that's something that we're really good at, showcase our quality of life assets, and then create a marketing toolkit. We are really lacking in the marketing materials that we have available. And so we've engaged New Boston Creative to help us with that process. They also identified five key targets. We are going to start right away on animal health and science, biosecurity, food safety, crop and grain science and milling. Those are going to be our first three that we hit hard this year. And we'll identify companies that potentially might want to be in Manhattan or maybe they should be in Manhattan and don't know that yet. And so how we go out and identify those and make contacts is going to be real critical over the next years because sitting back and waiting for calls is no longer an effective model for business attraction in today's environment. Data is really important when people are making decisions. This is a sample of Des Moines, but we are engaging this company to do the exact same model for us. So we'll have 100 to 125 data points that'll be immediately available on a website and you'll be able to either you get that by the metro area or by county, so Riley or Potawatomi County. We've already seen the initial draft of that and I think everybody's going to be real excited. Well, let me put it this way, people who like data are going to be really excited by that website. Some of the other activities, we are transitioning our building a site database over to Location One. We'd used another provider, but the state is using Location One. So it seems to make a lot more sense for us to be consistent with the state so that those platforms will communicate with each other. We rejoined Team Kansas last year. That's the statewide marketing organization that all the local ED groups are part of. And so we rejoined last year because we felt like there was some positive momentum in that organization with Commerce. And so we're going to rejoin this year and we've identified four or five events that we're going to be participating with, with the state. There are boutique organizations or companies across the country who will help you, as we talked about, identifying companies that may be under the radar, that aren't easy to find, and then also helping you set up appointments to go visit with them. And so we're going to do a test with that this year and see if those are effective. We've used them in other states where I've been and they've been pretty effective. So we'll see if that's something that works for us here in Manhattan. And then again, we'd like to get some additional partners into that program, including Gary County and potentially even some others. So we'll keep working on that. Just real briefly on some other items that we believe fall under Region Reimagine. MHK Talent Consortium is a project that Christie's working on with our colleges and universities. I think you all have received reports from Christie in regards to some of that and she'll be up there later to talk a little bit about that. We participated this year in the K-State All University Career Fair. It's the first time we've done it, to our knowledge. And there was only one other city there, which was Hutchison, Kansas. So, but we had 65 businesses who gave us jobs that they had open to take to the career fair to help try to connect students to those jobs. And so we actually partnered with Wemigo on that and had a booth there and we'll continue to look at ways we can expand that out. After our trip to Lincoln this year, MATC and USD 383 have started a conversation about a career academy, similar to what was done in Lincoln. And so kind of a tech high school and what that might look like. And so they've started having those discussions so that we can start targeting kids when they're in high school in terms of thinking about careers maybe and not necessarily just go to college. Maybe there's some other areas that you can get in and get into the workforce quicker. And sometimes it makes more sense in that way. You heard Janet talk about Keep and Advise, so I won't go back into that. Christie's really active right now in this regional healthcare consortium, Gary County and Riley County. And what are the key healthcare issues that are impacting our healthcare providers? And they are starting to have regular meetings to discuss those issues. And so that's something that we think is going to be really valuable in terms of Region Reimagine and some things we can make some impacts moving forward. I think getting everyone to the table is in itself an accomplishment. So then now we can move on to the next step of what are the key items that we need to work on together. Return to the Flails is a program that we've had to try to attract first retirees and then we expanded it out to a larger group of people. We think that needs a rebrand and an update and so we're going to be working on that over the next year because right now it's a little stale. But, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in our next presentation. And then Classroom to Career is a program where we team up fourth grade classes with employers. And it's something that all the employers really, really love. And when they have their meeting, when the teachers and the employers are together, the teachers are real excited and the employers are excited and they cheer and they holler. It was a great experience. We had 33 businesses participating in that this year. And so there are 33 fourth grade classes in both Potawatomi County and Riley County who are being sponsored by employers and they will go in and interact with the kids. And then at some point, the class will go out and tour the employer's facility and understand what that employer does. So that's kind of a feel-good program, but it's something that the kids love, employers love, the teachers love. And so we're excited to be the coordinating entity of that. So before we move into the next phase, any particular questions on that presentation?
Just to say that I'm really pleased to hear the healthcare initiative and that you're bringing a broad group together because it's so hard to keep track of what's happening in our community with regard to healthcare.
Well, and I, you know, there's, and Christie will tell you, I think, as well, we have some key people in the communities who are really driving that. And so we appreciate their leadership, Bob Koppel, Teresa Bramledge, and there's some others. But they're driving that and we're just happy to be part of that and help facilitate that.
Is that also with Fort Riley? There was that Fort Riley group that was working on some of those.
Yes, it also is Fort Riley.
Okay, all right.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Well, we're happy to be back again to also talk about where we are in our implementation of Region Reimagine and ways that we feel like we can move that forward. So one of the biggest challenges I've seen communities face in defining economic development is defining economic development. This is in part because so many things impact the development of cities that we sometimes use community development and economic development synonymously. Based on nearly 25 years as an economic development professional, I've found the best definition of economic development to be building economic prosperity for the entire community. That's what we're here to talk about tonight. It would be difficult to measure the success of a program without looking at new jobs, rising wages and private investment. Unfortunately, we have been struggling in these items recently. As economic development professionals, we believe Manhattan has a growth and prosperity problem. This is not a new problem, but the longer that we are stagnant, the harder it will be to change the trend and more likely that we may be in decline, stay in decline. While we were victims of some troubling demographic trends in Kansas, there is some evidence that Manhattan is falling behind even other Kansas cities as well as peer university cities. This was measured as part of the Market Street Report in 2017. While some trends are cyclical and will eventually turn around, there are some challenges facing Manhattan that indicate that it might not be an easy course correction. Outmigration and slowing public sector job growth are greater regional challenges, but we have flat job growth since 2010 in part because of declining enrollment and deployed troops. Finally, we hear consistently that real estate and occupancy costs are greater than people expect, creating a competitive disadvantage for both talent and business. This is a problem, this problem is something that we have been aware of for some time and we're not sitting idly by. The Greater Manhattan Project, now Region Reimagine, was our recognition of our growth challenge. We started this project three years ago. Our leadership insisted that we complete a strategic planning process that told us where we needed to be and how we needed to get there. It was a consensus-based plan using one of the top firms in the country. In total, more than 2,000 individuals participated in some fashion. Through the process, the consultancy community came together and identified three primary means of responding to our growth problems: economic diversification, entrepreneurial dynamism, and talent sustainability. Economic diversification creates a vision that says we can attract high-value targets while creating an environment that allows our existing employers to grow and succeed. We've already committed to a number of these initiatives, including formalizing the business retention expansion programs and working with Potawatomi County on developing a world-class marketing program. Manhattan is uniquely positioned to be a regional leader in entrepreneurship. You can see the importance of entrepreneurship when you look at our largest employers. Companies such as Manco, Haynes, and Civic Plus, among others, either started or continue to be entrepreneurial ventures. We have to find and cultivate the next generation of startups. Finally, but definitely not least important, is for the first time Manhattan's economic development program will have a sizable portion of the budget committed to attracting and retaining talent. The Chamber has committed to several of these initiatives already. The actionable vision for economic prosperity, which we set out to create three years ago, has some important components that are sitting still because many key initiatives lack funding. Last time I was here for this funding request, I spoke of our need to fund the implementation of the elements of this plan. But our last presentation was largely tactical. I appreciate your support of our ideas for implementation, but it was clear that you asked for a vision. Tonight, I want to ensure you that we have a clear understanding of that vision. That's why you see everyone here tonight. We believe very much in prosperity for all. So what does economic prosperity look like? Obviously, it is in job creation and higher wages, but we also see prosperity and vibrancy as a path to creating an environment where people want to live, start businesses, and invest. All of these factors are invariably interconnected and must be addressed simultaneously for the highest effectiveness. If the city agrees that we have a growth and prosperity problem, then it's time for a bold new approach to economic development. We are asking for a two-year commitment of $350,000 per year to fund growth through job creation. This two-year commitment is roughly a smaller percentage, as we found out tonight, what the total balance is, but the balance of the remaining in the current economic development fund, which passed in 2012 in a Chamber-led initiative. How we will allocate that funding is directly in line with the primary goals identified in Region Reimagine. Tonight, we have subject matter experts and community partners here to discuss these topics. Rebecca Robinson is a proven economic development expert that works with us from her position with K-CURF. She will be discussing economic diversification. Christie Rodriguez, our Director of Region Reimagine, will then address the Commission on Talent Sustainability.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to present to you this evening. I've worked in economic development in Manhattan for the past 11 years and tonight I'm pleased to share the Chamber's vision for economic diversification. Through the Greater Manhattan Project process, we were reminded that our community is dependent on public sector employment. And in recent years, we've felt the shifts and fluctuations in student enrollment and troop deployments in our community. In order to increase the diversity of our economy, Market Street also pointed out that we would be most successful if we capitalized on using our differentiated strengths, leveraging those legacy employers as catalysts. As Jason mentioned, this will require bold action focused on the attraction, retention, and expansion of companies as well as the activities that enable that growth to occur. And while the Chamber has partnerships to deliver on those strategies, like the partnership with the city, the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership, KBED, and others, the Chamber understands that we must be more aggressive in our efforts. In order to catalyze economic, this economic diversification vision, the Chamber has three priorities that require investment. The first is to build out the economic development team at the Chamber. One of our greatest inhibitors of developing economic development prospects is bandwidth. We are in a community that can wait for companies to come and knock on our door. We have to be aggressive and proactive in reaching out to companies that have never thought about Manhattan, Kansas. And when we do that, it works, but it takes people. People reaching out to companies, developing relationships, matching them with resources, and closing the deal. The other two items are enabling activities that would give the Chamber the tools to be more effective. The first is to commission research that would help to inform our decisions. Oops, am I going the wrong way? There you go. This research would be the kind of data that would help us to position ourselves to be more competitive nationally and internationally and help us to target appropriate economic opportunities. And the last item is to conduct business location planning. One thing that Market Street highlighted and that we have seen in our community, company attraction and expansion efforts, has been our community's relative lack of development product, including appropriate land and commercial facilities. And so we need to look across our community and plan creatively and strategically about where business location can and will occur and how to enable it. These items total $150,000 and if funded, will catalyze this strategy of leveraging our existing strengths to diversify our economy and build prosperity in Manhattan. I'll now hand it over to Christie Rodriguez to talk about talent sustainability.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am excited to present to you today. My name is Christie Rodriguez. I'm the Program Director of Region Reimagine. And as Jason and throughout this presentation, you've been hearing about the three key goals of Region Reimagine, being economic diversification, talent sustainability, and entrepreneurial dynamism. So the talent sustainability component is a fairly new component, but yet is extremely critical to our overall success. And as economic development has evolved over time, it has become one of those key components that focuses on social connections, cultural connections, natural. So it's taking a holistic view of some of those quality of life factors to then identify what are those key things that we need to do to make sure that we're successful in attracting talent and retaining talent here. Throughout 2019, I've, we've dedicated significant effort on key talent strategies, identified some gaps and as well as some capacity constraints. So with that, oh, I'm sorry, that's me. With that, you saw this slide earlier. I just wanted to highlight just a few components that Jason touched on a little bit, which part of the main part of talent attraction and retention is how do we make connections both with students and soldiers to the community, to educational resources, to jobs, that social network so that they are integrated into the community, have a way of having professional both development and networking opportunities, but also a social experience. Career exploration happens through the Career to Classroom program that Jason had mentioned. One of the exciting things that we just started, we are trying to identify as a part of those connections, applied learning opportunities that will then ultimately lead to employment opportunities. So we launched a MHK Talent Consortium, which consists of the higher education institutions within the three county area to come together and say, what are some of the things that we can do focused on internships, but collectively to then ensure that we are attracting that talent and able to make those connections between employers and students. We have also participated in job We have also participated in job fairs, and I'm hoping that we can do more additional job fairs. We have been... We hosted, just last month, the KEEP Transitioning Soldier Tour, and that Jason had mentioned as well. That was really successful. There were several, I believe it was 11 soldiers that came through, and six out of those soldiers were convinced that they wanted to remain here in Manhattan, with two more that were still debating. So I think that's pretty good out of those that visited. We did go to K-State. We went to Manhattan Area Technical College, Civics Plus, Florence, and several other areas to really show off all of the wonderful assets that Manhattan has to offer. So I would like to be able to do more of those on a regular basis. That program is funded already through the Transitioning Soldiers Program, and so instead of them touring everywhere else, I would like to have more tours here in Manhattan. Creating a regional healthcare consortium has been really powerful conversations. We've had two meetings so far. It's from all three counties, but what we have identified is all the issues are the same, and we need to identify what are the things that we really can hone in on to make a difference in health outcomes. So a portion of that, of what's been discussed, is hosting some forums in the spring, some that may be appropriate for the public, and some that may be appropriate just for the healthcare providers to get together and have those conversations. Mental health has also been a key topic of discussion and is critical here in Kansas with the numbers being so high of the needs, as well as suicide prevention. So I've been really impressed with the in-depth conversation and the engagement and willingness to even stay as long as they're staying, even after the meetings are ending. Some of the best conversations even happen then, too. So that's been a great effort that we hope to build upon. There are some opportunities that we've been identifying with strengthening talent pipelines, scaling up existing programs so that we're not recreating the bill or duplicating any efforts, that we're just scaling up, implementing quality-of-place projects. If you received the latest report, you would have seen several of those projects that have been implemented in 2019, and just the sheer volume of what has been completed has been pretty impressive. The point behind Region Reimagine is that it's a movement to inspire everyone to do their part to attract and retain talent. So if everyone's doing their part, it's amazing how much can be accomplished. Region Reimagine has also had several conversations, and we're participating in several community groups that are having conversations surrounding our housing challenges, and what are some of the ways that we can overcome and start making progress. So with that, there are a series of action items that I need help with. I had mentioned some of those capacity constraints, and I teach in my K-State class that in any kind of project management, your restraints are time, resources, money, staff, all those kind of things, and that's kind of where we're at. We, in hiring a workforce development specialist, would help me tremendously in making... tremendously in connecting to many more talented individuals that are interested in staying right here in Manhattan, if only they knew how to connect and what our community has to offer. So I can go through my process and try to reach out to as many people as possible, but I know there's a whole group behind me, and so we need to be able to expand that capacity. So hiring the workforce development specialists, and their key duties are something that's really exciting that's happening here in Manhattan, in that the Young Professionals Program is currently being reworked. And in the audience tonight, you have several members from Young Professionals that are working on that effort, identifying what are the... and being strategic about it. What are those key areas that we need to be working towards to then better help make those connections and integrate everyone into the community feeling... to ensure that everyone feels like that they're a part of the community, that this is their home. So again, the conducting... This person would help expand capacity on attending and participating in additional job fairs, hosting additional KEEP Transitioning Tours, additional applied learning opportunities. One of the things that has come out of our MHK Talent Consortium group is that we need some internship training for employers. So people may be... Employers may be interested in taking on that intern, but they need a little bit of guidance on how to do that. Carrie Keller just spoke at the Success in 60 event at the Manhattan Chamber just a couple of weeks ago. That was successful, but that's only the beginning. There are multiple things that we have identified that we would like to do in order to enhance that so that employers feel that they have the tools in place in order to host an intern. And then although we've only had two meetings so far of the Regional Healthcare Consortium, you can tell that momentum is building, and there will be initiatives that we've already began speaking about that I think that we could do a lot more here in the near future. Talent relocation, resource support, is another key thing. When I came here, I met with multiple employers, and we talked about if you're hiring a lot of people, including in BAF, then what are the tools that we have available to then help them in their recruiting efforts? And although we have some resources, we're a little short on the digital side of things. So what we would like to do is build a toolkit that would help those employers recruit that talent here and make an easier decision with the information at their fingertips from their home, wherever they may live, to relocate here. There are some additional conversations that have been occurring about neighborhood revitalization. We're still kind of in that discovery process of the roles with that, but I think that that will be another key component in helping us work through some of our housing challenges here in Manhattan. The last but not least, that toolkit, I want to do... I do want to say that that would be a multimedia promotion for both promotional materials, so that when you go to the job fairs, then you can hand out information about the site, where to go to, to get additional information. And there are several examples out there that we have been researching, and Jason and several members in the audience has been researching about what that might look like. But more to come if we are able to identify the funding.
So the final area of focus is entrepreneurial dynamism. Finally learned how to say that word. For this, I would like to introduce Derek Richards of Spark Manhattan. The last time we were here, there were questions about what entrepreneurial programming would look like. At that time, I expressed a desire to work with our local entrepreneurial community on the items that would be the greatest impact. Derek and his partners have been working on these issues for a number of years now. We have had conversations about the opportunity for a partnership that brings together the entire community to work on this effort. While we were still in the exploratory stages, we thought it would be a great opportunity to hear from someone that has a proven track record in these kind of community initiatives.
Hello. My name is Derek Richards. I am the owner and broker of Alliance Realty. I'm also the owner of a cowork space, The Fellow, here in Manhattan, and I am one of the organizers of Spark, which is a thriving entrepreneurial and small business ecosystem. So what is Spark? I can say it in this way. In the last three years, we have put our efforts as in our focus is to make a thriving and impactful impact on small business here in Manhattan, Kansas. And we've done this in three ways. The first way, we saw an area that we wanted to bring, which is resources and programs that small business can have, and we can use these programs to allow them, to give them the boost they need to grow. For example, one of the programs that we brought to Manhattan, Kansas, was 1 Million Cups. And with this program, it allows business people to share their success of their business, but really allows them to share their struggles with the community, and people are invited to be a part of their struggles and hopefully give advice and move them forward to the next stage of their business. Another driver that we are using to help small business is cowork space. Or I think it's better to say it's affordable workspace, and this is near and dear to my heart. That's how I started my real estate company. I started at a desk in an office that I shared with another company, and it worked for me. So we have been really excited to help small business grow appropriately. The last thing we want to do is put on a small business a big line item for brick and mortar and utilities and all the other things that come with taking on too much all at once. So that's been really effective as well. Last initiative we are really proud of is we started a pitch competition. You might have heard of Startup MHK. This is... We are done with our third year of our pitch competition, and we are excited to say that we have raised and have injected $55,000 into the Manhattan community. We've had over 75 pitchers present at those events. Six out of the nine winners are still working, and their businesses are still running here in Manhattan. We'd love for there to be more, and we're working hard to make sure we keep all these businesses here. And of course, we've had hundreds of people at these events. So that's... Those three ways have been really, really impactful in the last three years. And that's why we need to bring Spark to the next level. For the last three years, we have been doing this grassroots and largely held together by volunteer hours, volunteer time, and minimal resources. So we know that we need to have a strategic partnerships with leaders in our community, which we're working on. And of course, we need to have... work towards a partnership with the Chamber. We need a Spark. We need to be accountable, and we need to move forward with capturing metrics so that our partners can see the return on investment with the impact that we're having. Numbers could be... Metrics could be participation of how much participation is happening at these events, what is the impact that we're having with the small businesses that we're hand-holding through this... through our process and through the conveyor belt that we are building, and how can we track jobs that they are creating? So for our first six months, we are focusing on first establishing our board, which we've already... which already has started, with Jason Smith with the Chamber. We're excited to have Mary Veneer and Kent Glasgow a part of that. We're really excited about implementing brand-new programs to Manhattan and to this entrepreneurial ecosystem. We feel like the need right now is an accelerator, and we've found a lot of talent through our efforts, and we've unearthed these gems that are here in Manhattan, which is why we get excited about small business and entrepreneurship, because there's talent here. And we are... When we get to see them grow, and we get to... Then hopefully in 20 years, that tree grows into a Civics Plus or a GTM. So, yes, so we need to be focusing on this entrepreneurial accelerator. We also feel it's important to have a mentorship program with small business. That's something that we've always wanted to do, just haven't had the resources yet. So we believe entrepreneurial dynamism is all these things that we've been doing for the last three years. And that's why we need to take Spark to the next level. Spark is for Manhattan. It's not just for The Fellow and for the cowork space. And that's why we are working with the Chamber to keep moving Spark forward and take it to the next level. Our small business and entrepreneurs in Manhattan need programming, and they need mentorship that can take their business to the next level, and that's what we're working on.
So just as last time, I present the expectations we have of this bold new approach to economic development. We have set a five-year goal of 500 new jobs that pay at or above the average income. While many have expressed that 500 as a goal may be too aggressive, we in fact believe that if the plan is fully implemented, we will be able to look at our results in five years and see as many as 1,000 new jobs that have been created in our community. What would 500 to 1,000 new jobs mean to future commissions? It would mean as much as 1.5 million in new general fund revenues. This would be on top of the additional revenues generated for the school district, the counties, as well as 12.5 million in annual retail expenditures, and as many as 500 new homes. Manhattan has a growth and prosperity problem. We've known this. We've set out to create plans to solve it, and the time has come for action. We're not alone in working to solve this. We have community-wide partners and support. As you can see from our presentation and those in the audience, we have support from a wide swath of our community. Bottom line is, we have been entrusted by the business community to address Manhattan's challenge of growth and economic prosperity. This is a sample of businesses that have expressed support of implementing the entire Region Reimagine strategy in addition to a sample of our over 140 advantaged Manhattan investors. So tonight, our ask of you is clear. In 2018, Market Street Services said the window of opportunity to achieve this vision is narrow. Will the city entrust us to enable economic prosperity in Manhattan? If yes, then we believe the time is now to fund our plan. So with that, we are happy to answer any questions and for further discussion.
So before I ask my question, I just want to say, this presentation compared to Lily's last one is a night and day. It's much more clear what the long-term strategy and vision that you want to accomplish is. So it makes it a lot easier for us to go back and defend ultimately whatever the decision we make tonight is. So thank you for that. The only real question I have is, so Spark, is it going to be a separate nonprofit, 501(c)(3)?
So Spark is going to be a 501(c)(3).
Okay.
And we are discussing potential contract relationship between the Chamber and Spark. So we had talked about hiring an entrepreneurship person and creating entrepreneurial programming. And as we talked about, a lot of their goals and our goals were the same. So how could we combine those resources and provide greater services at a less expensive cost? And so it would be a contractual relationship for them to provide the services, and then they would report back to us, all of us, a series of metrics to show what they've accomplished as part of that contract.
The only reason I bring that up, and maybe once I see how that contract ultimately is worked out, I'd be less concerned, but we give money to social services in the community, right? And we have pretty aggressive oversight on the money that we give, and there isn't a social service. Maybe Manhattan Emergency Shelter comes close, but between special alcohol and SSAB funding. But there's no other nonprofit Manhattan getting $100,000 from the city of Manhattan, right? So ultimately, however that works out, I don't think that we should treat, in my opinion, Spark any differently than what we would treat the Manhattan Emergency Shelter.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think the difference would be, this is part of the Total Economic Development Program, and Spark would be a partner in that. But I agree with you, that needs to be spelled out, and that's why we'd said this is an initial discussion phases. But that would need to be...
So if Spark wasn't delivering, you essentially could...
End the contract.
Because we're offering that money to the Chamber, and so if we came on you and said, "This isn't performing," you could go elsewhere.
We would end the contract.
Okay. I still have a little bit of concern, at least on the accountability side for that, because it seems different than what we do elsewhere, but that makes me feel a little bit better about it.
Well, I mean, we have contracts with service providers. We talked about marketing firms, and we talked about others. We would view it in that realm, that they are a service provider providing economic development services to the overall effort. But again, we would need safeguards, and we would need metrics, and we would need... And that's all.
I think, to me, it's more of how the community at large would view this. I don't think anything nefarious, and I'm sure Sparks is a great organization that will deliver, but I'm more concerned about how can we make sure that that message is delivered clearly to the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think out of all your... The entire presentation, Exhibit B that you gave us is one of the best things that I've seen. The presentation was great. I don't want to de-emphasize that. I don't want to de-emphasize that. This gave a lot of bullet points and benchmarks and exactly what each of those criteria are that we're going to be seeing. So my understanding is you're going to be hiring a economic development director?
Yes. It would be the person you would have recognized replacing training.
Okay. And you're going to have a search process for that?
Correct.
Okay.
And a regional, we, we want a professional person to come in and do that.
Okay. Is there a timeline do you have for that?
Soon as, soon as possible.
Yeah, because there is a sense of urgency in this. I was wondering, because you also want to get a good one.
Correct.
And in the sense of haste, you don't want somebody that you know, but may not be qualified as well. So I would like for that person to be extremely well at what they're doing, because we also want them to stay here long-term in that position, regardless of where all of this other money goes. As far as the talent sustainability, where do you, so Kristi did a wonderful job of going through each of these areas and detailing them for us. Workforce officer, where does Kristi fit in all this?
So Kristi will have two roles if this moves forward. One will be, she will maintain the connectivity of Region Reimagine. So that, and they have a separate group that, that works with her on oversight of the strategy, the economic development strategy. She will also have a role as directing talent for our economic development program. So, so she would be over that division or that department and would manage that employee.
So she would be the director for Region Reimagine? These are words that I need to have some comfort with. And under her, she will have at least one staff member?
Correct.
To implement.
That will be specifically on the work, because if...
On the talent compotion.
On the talent workforce. Because the economic diversification will have a group of people working on it and entrepreneurial will have a group of people working on it. And so Kristi will manage the talent, because that's really the biggest new part of the program.
Right. And it's pretty comprehensive.
Correct.
And it's pretty ambitious. So one of the things, if we're going to look at this for two years, it's extremely ambitious. So you may want to tailor that to attainable goals that are moving us forward. Because I like everything I'm seeing, but that might be your five-year plan probably.
And it is.
Yeah, so that might be what it is. Spark, I had similar concerns as Commissioner McKee. What I have in, in number three here is very different than what was presented to me tonight. So which one is it? Is it both? Is it one? Because this one says mostly about the North Campus Corridor master plan, North Campus research assets, formalizing pipeline to K-20 on all of that. But what I heard here was more of a startups.
Yeah, and there, and there's some startup components in the, in the Region Reimagine plan. If you remember the last time we were here and we were talking about what those things might be, and I relayed that in my experience, the best programs are the ones that are developed in collaboration with the startup community. Because at the end of the day, they're the ones that understand the, the needs and the things that are holding back what's going on. So we, we had a plan to have a person who would do that, which is similar to what was recommended and what we had in my previous two places. And as we began discussing that with them, they, we realized we had similar tracks and that it felt like we could get a lot more with less resources if we combined our resources together. So I think all that is still yet to be defined, because we are still, I mean, this is probably less than two months since we started talking. I just wanted to give you a sense of, instead of trying to come back up here and say, well, we might do this, but we need to get with the startup community. It's like, well, let's just bring the startup community to the table and say, you know, this may be our solution, but let's work on it and see, and see what it is.
Right. And I think it's a good idea. I was talking to Brian McLendon a while ago, and one of the things he said was Kansas is missing that, that piece. And if we're going to work with Spark, I would like to see that blossom, having recruitment, recruiting our talent from Kansas State University. I would like to see where that goes. Because I heard wonderful things about all the, the things that you went to where we thought, why don't we capture that talent and keep it here? They can move on to other places. So I think that's something we need to put more emphasis in, because not only young people, but in general, the population is being more remote, more cowork spaces, even in Aggieville, you want to rent out all of these little spaces, because they just need a spot to work in. So I like what I'm seeing. I think this is a much, much better plan. It's more, like I said, it is ambitious, but at the same time, this will probably be enough to give a boost so we can accelerate it further. So this is an investment to make sure that we have future growth. You know, I, I don't like to hear that we're stagnant and we're not doing well and it's not, you know, because I always feel really optimistic about Manhattan. And the people that come to Manhattan are always wowed, saying, wow, Manhattan wasn't like that when I grew up there. Manhattan has changed since I graduated from the university. So I still like that wow factor, but we want them to stay. We want them to get a job. And we want, we know that university students want to stay in Kansas, especially in Manhattan, if they had a job. So the salary of those jobs matter as well. So I think this is a more comprehensive plan and it's much more palatable, especially being for two years, and then we can revisit.
We had, we talked earlier about the possibility of going close to midnight. And perhaps we need to con, decide to have the executive session after...
Yeah, we just had a chat about that.
Oh, you did? Good.
The executive session is not necessary. We can have that in January.
Okay. It didn't get down this far. I'm sorry to bother you.
I didn't know you were going to introduce this, because...
No, I just thought, you know, it's getting close to midnight. Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. I would just like to say that I'm, we haven't had the public hearing. Maybe I'll just wait till we hear the public, till the public has had the opportunity to speak.
Okay.
That would be best.
Okay, Jason, if you just allow us, we'll have a public comment now. If anyone wishes to comment on this item, please come forward.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Larice Shope, and I will be the 2020 Chairman of the Board for the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm very excited to have this opportunity at this time, and we will be implementing our new plan for economic prosperity for all of Manhattan residents. We have a lot of challenges. However, I'm convinced that Manhattan is positioned for greatness over the next decade. It won't be easy, but with the incredible relationships that we have with the business community, the city of Manhattan, and our education partners, we are poised for great things. I also want to address a couple of administrative issues. As you may remember, the initial cost estimate for implementing the strategy in the current program would have created a need to increase the annual budget to 600,000 per year. We were able to repurpose some of our existing budget and make cuts in areas not deemed to be priorities in order to get that amount cut to almost half. That wasn't without pain or challenge by our team. But we felt that it was important to examine areas where we could be more effective before we came to this commission for the funds from the Economic Development Funds. Again, we believe in this plan 100%. But in order to achieve maximum effectiveness, we have to implement the entire plan. We are urging you to join us with this important endeavor. And thank you so much for your leadership. And to quote the mayor tonight, positive ambassadors.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Matt Crocker. I live at 1001 Mill Valley Circle. Tonight, I stand before you in a couple of capacities. The first, and one of the ones I'm most proud of, is I represent a company that has been investing in the Advantage Manhattan Fund since its inception. And we're very proud to support the economic activities of the Chamber as a result of that. The second and most recent reason I stand before you is I have recently been selected as Chair of the newly revamped Economic Development Committee of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. And as you've heard tonight from the presentation, we're at a very pivotal point as it relates to the Manhattan economy. And I want to encourage you to support the funding request tonight. The business leaders and most specifically the Advantage Manhattan investors recognized this pivotal point several, a couple of years ago. And as a result, they put forth funds that resulted in a strategic plan known as Region Reimagine. And that was born out of the frustration from this group's understanding that our economic performance was subpar and that we needed a visionary plan on where this community was going to go. They also recognize that we cannot continue to try the same tactics. And I think, I hope you've heard tonight that the Chamber is expecting to do new things in this new economy that we're dealing with. So one of the things to help and support this endeavor, which Commissioner McKee, I think addresses your concern, the Chamber leadership repopulated our Economic Development Committee with some of its biggest stakeholders, who represent the largest investors in Manhattan, Advantage Manhattan. And the purpose of this change was to ensure that the Advantage Manhattan investors held the Chamber staff accountable for taking the actions that are necessary to move this community forward in terms of economic activity, vitality, and ultimately achieving the vision laid out in Region Reimagine. This move should provide the city additional comfort and confidence in supporting the Chamber's ask, as this group will be stewards of not only the city's money, but also the private money that goes into the economic development activities of the Chamber. I realize that resources are limited, but if we cannot make commitments to invest in activities that provide future economic growth, we will find ourselves with even more limited resources in the future to come. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Samarat Dirks. I am a partner at the law firm Seaton, Seaton and Dirks here in town. My capacity presenting to you this evening is as a young professional. Also, I am an executive committee member of the Chamber and will be the chairwoman in a couple of years. So the middle column that you see here is the 100,000 per year for talent sustainability. The importance of that column to me is the workforce, workforce development specialist. As you'll see, there are many YPs in the room. A lot of them are on our committees. And if you guys want to raise your hand, if you're even, if you're on a committee, if you're not on a committee, you're going to join it, these folks are all here because they care. They are engaged, they are connected in this, in this community, and they care about this initiative. And it's your support of this initiative tonight. The, the YP group has been torn down from, to its grassroots and rebuilt. We have formed a committee of about 10 to 15 people. It's a core committee. Underneath that, we have five subcommittees. One of those subcommittees is, is specifically tasked with breaking into K-State and, and military. And how do we retain those professionals? How do we get them to want to stay in Manhattan? How do we plug them in? Each committee has about 10 to 15 people on it. So we're talking about 50 to 60 people that have generated from the Chamber of Commerce's leadership to try to revamp the Young Professionals Group. We can't do it alone, and that's why I'm standing here, is asking for your assistance. Most of us are owners of our business or we are employees, because we are young professionals. If we had this workforce development specialist that would help us, that would be a person that would actually work on Young Professionals initiatives and do some of the planning, the logistics, the budgetary pieces for us, so that we can also perform our jobs to their, to our best ability. The, the funding, the funding of this position is of course integral to the actual vision that we have and that we are so ready to implement. 2020 is going to be a big year for young professionals, so watch out.
Raise up here before somebody else gets... I'll fall asleep standing up. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Greg Williams. I come here in two capacities. Number one is a proud citizen of Manhattan for nearly five years now, and also as the CEO of the K-State Foundation. You know, when I reflect back over the last couple of years, as we got involved with Advantage Manhattan, Dennis Mullins' conversation with me comes back to me when he shared the vision of what we were trying to do, the importance of the business community's involvement in this community. And certainly over the last five years, I've seen a dynamic here, much different than many of the other communities I've lived in, with the kind of partnership we enjoy between our university, our city, our business community, and it truly is special. So I think it is important to not forget that we have a unique opportunity here. Usha, Commissioner, I certainly understand your reservations with accepting this notion that we may be flat or stagnating. But as I sit here as a business leader, running an enterprise, I do see that at times. But I see promise in what we've developed here, in a grand vision and a plan. And to me, when I think about our foundation and what we do, our investment is in people. And it's in our belief and our strategy and what we can do and what we can execute. And over the last five years, we've done exceptional things, not only for the university, but also for this community. As a not-for-profit, we certainly are concerned about what is our core mission. But we've been able to go outside of just raising money for the university and managing an endowment and doing capital project investments, going at risk and bringing the kind of resources we need for this community to thrive. I absolutely believe in the vision of this plan. When I reflect on the last couple of years and the thousands of hours that community leaders have put into this plan to come up with something bold, visionary, aspirational, that everybody could get behind, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to believe in the great people in this community to execute. I think we should be encouraged by the amount of investment that the private sector has brought to the table, and we're asking to leverage that to the fullest. A word I heard a minute ago is optimal. So we think about what's minimal, acceptable, objective in the things that we do, and what's our optimal objective? I think our optimal objective is what we cast the vision of earlier. We have a vision to create 5,000 jobs over the next 20 years in this community, absolutely attainable. And I think if you reflect on what Jason's remarks are from 2002 to now, 2,300 creative, I don't think it's hard to imagine that stretch going to 5,000. We double in increments in every decade in what we do at the foundation. I think that absolutely is true in what we can do in this community. I think you see the faith and confidence of the civic leadership in this community believing in this plan. We're asking for a little bit of extra help to invest in the right capacity to fund the hunt. I think these positions are going to be critical. We have great confidence in Jason and his team to help execute. And I think, I think you just need to know that the Chamber Board and the, the business community are 100% behind this vision. So I thank you for your leadership and for being up nearly till midnight to listen to all of us speak.
Evening Commissioners and Mayor. I'm Neil Horton. I'm representing buyer construction company tonight, one of the 140 business investors in the Chamber's Advantage Manhattan program. And many of them are represented, you know, in the room tonight, as well as on the slide that had all the business logos that you saw a little bit ago. Over the years, I've helped with fundraising for multiple campaigns of the Advantage Manhattan program. Now, I've always been impressed with the vision, optimism, and the confidence of our local business owners and their support of the Chamber's economic development initiatives. During the feasibility study for the last campaign, it became clear that a broad-based study was needed to determine the focus of the Chamber's efforts for the future. I personally met with 10 to 15 business owners and explained the concept of this study, and it was widely accepted as an integral part of the future economic development in Manhattan and one that they were willing to support with their contribution to the program. The implementation of that vision has begun with the creation of the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership and Region Reimagine Program, things that you heard quite a bit about earlier this evening. The Chamber's request presented this evening is a continuation of that vision, and the money is available in the ED fund for the very purpose it was intended for, which is the promotion of Manhattan as a prosperous place to own and operate a business. Commissioners, I urge you to share that vision, optimism, and confidence of those 140 business leaders, and support the Chamber's request for ED funding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Scott Seal. I'm a business owner, Realtor at Alliance Realty here in town. Wanted to rise today to speak about a couple of different aspects of this funding proposal. The, the first one that's been talked about some is the Young Professionals Program. As a young-ish now professional, that's, that's been a program that I've been really enjoyed over the last three years. And I think, you know, as we were listening to the Douglas Center comments, I talked, one of the speakers talked about being able to connect to a community and how that, that helps someone who isn't necessarily from here. And as we talk about retention of, you know, whether it's Job Corps, MATC, or K-State, or Manhattan Christian College, or... or K-State, or Manhattan Christian College, or Fort Riley, retaining people who aren't born, raised here, but have come here and decided to stay here. The Young Professionals Lunch Program especially for me has been really helpful both as a businessperson, but also just to, to give yourself that sense of community as you meet more people and start to get connected within the community, and that's what makes it that much harder to even think about leaving. And so I think that's a really valuable program and love the idea of, of helping that flourish even more. But secondly, I want to talk a little bit about the entrepreneurial dynamism and how excited I am about the possibilities that that, that aspect of things provides. I think that there's a lot of focus in economic development, and when you hear, when you talk to people about economic development, I think a lot of people envision, you know, great white whale hunting and bringing these massive corporations from out of town to Manhattan, and I think that, that is an important aspect of economic development and, and has its role, but I, I think one that maybe doesn't get as much attention as it deserves is, is helping those companies that are already here get to the next level and, and move on. And so, we, we know that three of our, we've talked about that a lot today, three of our biggest private sector employees in Manhattan are not companies that were recruited here, but they're companies that were started here. And so, how, focusing on, I think we have a lot of resources to start a company, and we have a lot of resources available for larger companies, and, and maybe is, is that growing that company from two people to twenty people, that can, can be a really efficient use of resources and, and a really way to, to build the economy and to get jobs, because when I left K-State fifteen years ago, I, I have tons and tons of friends from college that want to stay here, that, that, but had to leave because there wasn't a job here, because Civic Plus wasn't where it is now, GTM wasn't where it is now. And so, the, what I always kind of tell all my friends from, is I want to, the one, I want to grow local business so that, you know, David and Diane at Threads, as much as I hate to take business away from them, but I don't want them to sell so many "I miss Manhattan" shirts, because I want the people buying those shirts to stay here instead. And so, all of my friends that, that moved and now they live in Chicago and have put down roots and always talk about, man, I wish I could come back. The next generation of those graduates from all of those institutions that we've talked about stays here because of small businesses that we can grow and focus on the talent that we have instead of the hit or, you know, all or nothing proposition of recruiting these massive companies. And I guess I should say not instead of, but in addition to. And so I think that that's, the, the things like the Fellow, Startup M H K, One Million Cups, all of those things are doing really great right now, but have a lot of potential to be even better if the community can, can bet on them and, and put their support behind them. So I respectfully ask for your support.
So, we need to take up a procedural matter. We have this item to complete. We also have a contractual issue with the C V B that needs to be completed before year end. So, I would propose and move that we temporarily, I'm reading this because it's ordinance-related, we temporarily alter the requirement of Resolution Number zero five zero one one eight B that the City Commission Legislative Meeting adjourned prior to midnight to allow this current legislative meeting to continue and to adjourn prior to one A M. We can consider on December eighteenth, twenty nineteen.
I second.
Can you call the rule, please?
Yes.
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 No, why'd we make the rule if we're not going to follow it?
The, just to be clear, though, the main reason we're, is because it's in the, into the year, right?
Right.
So we're kind of okay.
Well, and the reason we did it in the first place is that midnight it become, we advertised this meeting for today. At midnight, it becomes another day on the calendar, so we have to keep things really squeaky clean.
So with that in mind, any remaining speakers, please be mindful of the time so we can, because we still have to get to Karen. Please go ahead.
Thank you. So my name is Jessica Elmore, and just a few things I'd like to mention is, in the Region Reimagined, I would like to hear more about connecting with like the Job Corps in different spaces, because although connecting with Kansas State University, which I'm a part of, there's a different level of elitism, and we need to make sure that we're at least in our conversations, having those discussions about how we bring in those different spaces because of what it looks like if we're really going to be talking about the region. These are individuals who are transitioning into the workforce as well, and they may come from a different situation than being able to go to Kansas State University and things like that. Also, our foster care system, there are students who are going to be growing up and getting out of that situation. What are we doing to make sure that they too can see themselves a part of that? I truly believe in entrepreneurship, and I love it, and Manhattan definitely can support that, but I would also say we were going to find ourselves in a place where we're going to be talking about how to diversify. I remember a few years ago, Mr. Glasscock talked about how we're going to have to bring in people to this area to be able to fill those five thousand jobs and these wonderful salaries, and they're going to be from people from different spaces, and they're looking for different things, and we have to think about that. I didn't hear anything about the social aspect, like I can come and I can work here, but then what do I do? Everyone doesn't want to be an entrepreneur, and so we have to think about what are people going to do, what are their families going to do, and is it going to be the same thing over and over? Because people won't want to stay here. I mean, I don't have to live in this city in order to service people in this community, so we're not doing ourselves a favor by just having these jobs, but people don't want to stay here because they have nothing to do. If I'm making seventy-five thousand dollars a year, I can get on a plane and go and do what I want to do, and it's not here because there's nothing for me. So we have to think about that. We have to make sure that these, you know, young professionals, I've been to a couple of those things, heard about, you know, the One Million Cups, but the question is, how are we getting this information to people who are not a part of the same types of circles? I don't want to have to be a part of Leadership Manhattan in order to get to know the business community. I want to be able to come in this area and look at what other kind of businesses can I be a part of, like how are we supporting minority of women-owned businesses, you know, like what's happening to make sure that those visible things, so when people come from these different cities come, can say, I actually want to bring my family here, or if I don't have a family, I won't feel like I have to be a workaholic because I have nothing else to do. So I hope that the commission will continue to ask the questions and ask for that to be a part of the platform, because I don't see a lot of people here. I'm glad that people have friends who want to move back here, but I have people who don't want to stay here and are looking consistently, or people who've been here and are waiting for the best opportunity to leave, not because they don't like their job, but because the , the community is not taking care of a lot of their needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Enrique Gadiwei, and I'll be brief. In nineteen eighty-three, I graduated engineering, and I left Manhattan, took a job in Texas. I liked to stay here, but I couldn't find work in my profession. About twenty-five years ago, I started an online business so I could work from anywhere, so we moved back, I moved my family back from Texas in two thousand and three. It's a great way to, to make a living online, but we had an interest in manufacturing paper straws, so we set up a paper straw factory within the last year. Took a couple hundred thousand dollars of my own money and best. Took us four months to find a facility to manufacture. We couldn't find light industrial, we couldn't find three-phase power. And so I looked over at Topeka, Topeka has that, and they'll pay us fifteen thousand bucks and another ten thousand because we're a minority business. So, I guess the point of that, I, I do want to encourage you to look at this program. We need that for Manhattan, not only like coworking space, but also coworking manufacturing space, and that would be invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Grace, and I am a lifelong resident of the Manhattan community. I grew up here, and I didn't realize coming into this tonight that I was going to feel so personally connected to the story that's been told tonight, but I just wanted to share a little bit of my experience of becoming a professional in this community after growing up here and going to college. I work at the Blue Mont Hotel now, but my degree is in event planning, and I have a dream of owning my own event space one day, my own event planning company. And after college, before I started working at the hotel, I sat at a desk at the Fellow, and I competed in Startup M H K, and I've attended One Million Cups for many months as a way to network with other entrepreneurs and be around like-minded people and learn from them and learn what are they doing to make their dreams come true so that maybe I can follow in their footsteps. When I started my job at the hotel, I, I didn't know how to be an adult in this community where I had been a kid for so long, and the one thing I started to do was to attend Young Professionals events. And that is where I met friends that were my age, but I also met other professionals who were working in their jobs and living this, you know, quote-unquote, adult life, and I was able to model after them and learn from them as well. And when I see the story that's on the screen here, I kind of see the story of me, someone who chose to stay in Manhattan after she graduated from college because it was her home, and I wanted to, I wanted to stay here, I wanted to invest in this community. I am an entrepreneurial spirit. I look for any way I possibly can to take steps forward in my dream of owning my own business, and that becomes economic diversification, that becomes growing industry here because that's one more grassroots business that wants to make their home in Manhattan. So I, I didn't realize how personally I was going to feel about this until I heard this story told tonight, and I think that it's important to keep in mind the people like me. I'm not necessarily a talent retention, but me, like my peers, I could have easily left after college, but instead I have chosen to stay here, and I choose to stay here for as long as, as long as I can, because this is where I want to grow my business one day, and I want to be a part of the Manhattan business community, and I think there's so much opportunity to take students like me out of K-State and keep them here, grow their entrepreneurial spirit, and make them a part of the Manhattan business community. So I hope that you guys will take this seriously and not just see this as a slideshow or a presentation, but know that there are other personal stories just like mine that this, this decision will impact tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor's the governing body, Kent Glasscock, twelve-eleven Deep Creek Road. My family business has been a member of the Manhattan Area Chamber for over fifty years. We believe in it. And I am just as passionate about this chamber request as I was earlier about the North Campus You heard about, and we continually pat ourselves in the back about the town gown relationship, best in America. The real gem in this community is the chamber-town gown relationship. And in order for this community to move forward in the new ways of doing economic development, we have to have a chamber that has the bandwidth to commit to more and more complex strategies, as you've heard this evening. So I urge you to look favorably on this request. It is part of our future, and it has to be done, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public comment period and come back to the commission. Any further discussion?
I'll be quick. I just want to say first, Great Paper Straws Company, ever since I met y'all at Startup M H K, I've been running around town bragging about you. So I'm so happy that you chose to say, I told the commission at briefing session all about you, I've been taking your paper straws and showing them to people. It's amazing. Keep going. Overall, this is, as I said earlier, kind of a, at least for me, a night and day difference in terms of the presentation and being able to see what the long, more of what the long-term vision is. I know some of these are variables and things that we still need to work out and research that we have to do, but nonetheless, the vision is a little bit more clear. And I think something that I have consistently asked for since I've been on the commission for our economic development strategy is not to do the same old thing that we have largely done and to kind of expand our horizons a little bit, and I think that's exactly what this does and begins to do. I think there's probably more investment there that is necessary. To your point, which by the way, two times in a row during your public comment, you've said something that I've wanted to say, so you should run for office. But the point that she was making earlier, one of the things that always sticks out to me in these plans, and I, I think it is in there with some of the things that you, Chrissy, that you were talking about, but there is kind of this narrative that people feel, we talk about, we're creating these good jobs that pay seventy-five thousand dollars a year, but when you think about the perception of the person who is going to get that job, it's pro, you don't imagine it's the worker who is making thirty thousand dollars a year, and we've been able to move them up the scale. I've been a, I was a part of this like mentorship program a couple, it was a couple of months ago, and I remember someone asked me, in your career, Jared, like, when did you get to the point that you were at, like where, how did you fall, get your role at Civic Plus? And I would critically think to myself, and I kind of mentioned it earlier, and then I was like, you know what, I kind of tripped and fell. But not everybody's as lucky as I was, right? Not everybody was as privileged as I was, and so on these plans, how can we make sure that we're not just putting economic development strategies in that are going to kind of increase that in, income inequality, but how can we make sure that people who maybe don't have exactly the right skill set to work in ag research or a technology company, we give them the tools in their thirties or forties to do that? And last, I said this last time too, another big thing that I think is a part of that, but I want to make sure that we have a focus on it or start to have a focus on it, is same kind of concept, is how do we start training people for new jobs when their jobs get taken out by A I? Like, I think that we vastly overestimate the impact that that's going to have on our economy in the next twenty years. I brought that up last time, and since then, I think, I read a Forbes article not even two weeks ago, that Kansas City is going to be one of the major cities that's most heavily impacted by A I and the transition that will have on their economy. They have a whole task force developed on how they're plowing economic development money to make sure that they can develop their, those employees are going to be affected into different skills. So, they're obviously a little bit more further along in their economic development strategy, but two, three years from now, that's something that we absolutely have to think about and expand on. So, this evening, I'm supportive of what's proposed. The only thing that gives me a little bit of hesitation is the, that relationship with Spark and how that's going to work out. The only thing that I would ask is that we put the same amount of due diligence, the same amount of oversight that we would on any other nonprofit that we work with, even though they're